Get started. Good evening. It is six thirty on Wednesday, August thirteenth, and I am calling this meeting of the Chelmsford Planning Board to order. My name is Chris LaValle and I am the Chair of the Board. Tonight, we will be following the posted agenda. This meeting tonight is both in person and actually, do we have anyone on Zoom tonight? Anyone else?
There will be several.
Okay. So we'll be both in person and Zoom. If Zoom fails at any point in the meeting, we will continue in person. Meeting is being televised live and recorded via Chelmsford Telemedia and will be available on their website and YouTube. Tonight, we do have one board member not attending. Joel Luna is absent. The rest of the board is here. So first item on the agenda is public input. Public input shall be limited to topics under the board's jurisdiction, but are not subject to a pending public hearing tonight or one of our future ones. Those comments will be heard during the public hearings. So is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak in person or on Zoom? Okay, there being none, we'll move to the next section, Administrative Review. We are going to take High Street or Height Street first. And take it away.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Board. My name is Douglas House. I'm representing the applicant Susan Hillman. She is the owner of the property at one eleven High Street, which is being sold on Monday. During a title search, it was discovered that there was an outstanding covenant that had to be released, arising from a subdivision approximately fourteen years ago. No one would have picked up on it because really that subdivision covenant should have applied to only the two lots that were actually being newly created, not the third lot, which this is, which was always in existence in the front with the frontage and all the required setbacks, et cetera. So it probably should never have been included in the covenant. But to clear the title, we need to get a release of that covenant. And I've submitted the paperwork to Evan and paid the fee for my client and hope that we could get that endorsed so we can clear title and close on Monday.
Evan, do you have anything to add?
No, this is a pretty boiled way to end a voice saying these in the past. This family is literally closed out.
Okay. Any questions from board members? Okay, there being none, I will take a motion.
I will move that we release the covenant.
Motion for Mike.
Second.
Second by Deirdre. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Just for the record, everything you've signed tonight was your free involuntary act indeed.
Yeah.
Thank you very much and thank you for your help, everybody.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, NIMCOG draft of the Housing Production Plan and request for endorsement.
So Mike emailed me today, Mike NIMCOG, that is, is obviously he's not here with us tonight, his preferences for board members to continue to submit questions, comments, and it's things of that nature between now and ideally into Friday and Monday. Mike wants to meet with the Housing Advisory Board on Tuesday at five P M. to review Planning Board input, discuss with the Housing Advisory Board how they may like to address any of those Planning Board comments. And then I have an anticipated Mike back in front of the Planning Board on September tenth.
Okay. So are there any? Not thinking we would have a lot of discussion tonight on this, but
Yeah.
are there any pressing comments?
Well, I have one.
Evan covered?
I don't know about pressing, but um. It's not so loud. With regards to the ADUs, we sort of touched on this at the last meeting, but I feel, I mean, looking through it again, I was looking at two point four and three point three. Both express the wish that the Planning Board and others encourage the development of ADUs. And I would, I personally am at best neutral. And so at a minimum, I would want to lower the priority. Some of those are medium, I think, middle priority, and I'd like to make them lower priority. I mean, I think there's a lot of other. I mean, they're allowed to be built by right, so I think that's enough, you know? And I feel like there's other places where we can put our energy that would be more fruitful.
Yeah, and I think that was the sentiment from most people last time we talked about it. So my recommendation is to send your comments like that to Mike so that he has comments from the full board. Because I think if if that specific comment is addressed by everyone, it will carry more weight than just one or two people sending the comment in.
And I will also reiterate it at the Housing Advisory Board.
Thank you. Thank you. I already submitted the comments. That was one comment I submitted to Mike. The other one was that whatever stance we take on this, I want the Housing Production Plan to have a caveat in there, at least this draft, that things may change once we come out with the Managed Growth Strategy and that it may need to be readdressed. So whatever recommendations are in there, if the Managed Growth Strategy comes up with something counter or like reduces the priority, then we go back and readdress that. So I wanted, I asked him to see if we could add something specific language in there to address that. So that if people refer to it, they're, they know that we're going to.
The other thing I had on it was, and I guess I'll send it in a thing to Mike, but I just wanted to state it for the record, that like two point seven, I feel like it should be more explicit that one of the things we're hoping to encourage is kind of a, what did you call it, cottage colony? You know, the missing middle, like it's sort of stated, but I just want it to be more like concretely articulated that that is an objective of us in any housing production plan, that that bit of more affordable, smaller
Village.
village structures should be prioritized and sought in any development that occurs, not that we want to necessarily encourage development.
All right, thanks.
Chris, I was just going to mention, so I submitted comments again. If you didn't have, if anyone didn't have a chance to read it, I did again, not as a criticism of the plan, just I just wanted to point out one of the strategies in there was that the town could encourage how, you know, affordable housing by possibly using, utilizing properties that are tax possessions that have been foreclosed. And I just wanted to point that out that, so the state legislature changed the law regarding how cities and towns can handle foreclosed properties last November first. Before that, after giving the owner multiple notices, multiple opportunities to redeem or pay off the taxes owed, if it went all the way to foreclosure, the town could keep the lot of land if it was buildable. And we could probably do the strategy in the plan, but I just wanted to point out going forward, it's going to be a lot more difficult for the town to do that because you may have seen me a couple of times go before the Select Board. What the new law requires is that the Select Board now make a decision to sell the, you know, to direct me to sell, to sell the tax position or to retain it. And if we retain it, we have to have an appraisal done and then compensate that former owner after deducting the taxes that they are owed. So it might be a little more difficult to do that going forward, not saying it's impossible, but I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. And as you were just mentioning that, I thought of another thing that I'm going to mention to Mike. The city of Boston and a number of other municipalities have worked with the state to come up with a program to convert unused office buildings into residences. So that may be another avenue where we can potentially improve unused buildings for better uses that might fix a number of different solutions. So that's something I'm going to propose as a potential option to look at as well. Okay. All right. So just a reminder, make sure that you get those comments to Mike by the end of Friday and copy Evan as well, if you could. All right. Since it's not quite seven o'clock yet, we cannot do the public hearings. So let's get down to the discussion items. We'll take care of some of those items next. The F Y twenty-five annual report. I compiled a whole number of things that we did over the last fiscal year. I used my friend Chat G P T to help me compile stuff, so I didn't have to read through all of the minutes and it actually worked really well. And so I worked on that and linked it here for you to take a look at if you want. But I submitted that on, I believe, the week before it last. Managed Growth Strategy is the next item. The Select Board read their public service announcement this past Monday. They started discussing their representation, but they are going to vote on it, I think, at their next meeting next week. The Concom started to discuss it, but again, they'll probably decide at their next meeting since they've got another meeting in August where we don't. So we'll probably get those representatives by our first September meeting. We've gotten a few town meeting reps who have expressed interest. Evan, have you received any other ones that I haven't seen?
Badre replied.
Yeah.
Former strategic planning committee member.
And town meeting rep.
I've not received any feedback from any former twenty twenty. National Planning Committee members.
Okay.
But I'll send a follow up email.
Right. We also received one from Nancy Erway. And I forwarded you another one that I got from. There was one other person escaping my. My name's escaping me right now, but I sent you another one that was forwarded to me. So we'll have a list to go through in our first September meeting. We'll see what groups are represented and come up with a list of representatives. And then probably in our second September meeting, we'll have them come in and start discussing goals and what the plan is for that group. Sound like a plan? Any other questions on that? All right. Let's move on to liaison updates. Liaison updates?
I have nothing.
Um, I can update you from last month when we did the Center Village one. So Kelly from NIMCOG was there. They were talking about the, what they were planning on doing for improvements for Chelmsford Street, putting sidewalks on both sides, bike lanes on the south side, it becomes a bus pull off, looking at parallel parking closer to Center Square. They also talked about that Mass D O T is looking at putting in two roundabouts where four ninety-five meets one ten, both on the northbound side and the southbound side. They are going to be having a bunch of like pop-up meetings to talk to the neighborhoods, the community in regards to some of this stuff. They were talking about going to like the Saturday.
Farmers Market?
That's it, Farmers Market. Couple of things like the Tuesday night concerts, this thing's put on at the C C A. So they're going to be getting out and talking to the public. They have been out already a couple of times talking about bike routes and adding bike lanes in the areas, especially between Alpha and Emerson Road. They also about the Cushion Place Bridge. They are okay with not pushing for the bridge, but if we are getting money, what specifically can it be used for? Could be used for beautifications or other projects in the area? And so they were looking for input from the Planning Board as to what that would be. And then there was also talk about looking to see if we could get that area zoned as a village. So those were some of the things that they talked about. And there was supposed to be a meeting tomorrow, but I haven't seen anything come up about it, so I'm assuming now. I didn't think so. I didn't see the agenda come out for it, so.
Evan, do you have any updates on that discussion with the bridge?
So after speaking with the Center Village Committee, I did make contact with the developer. The developer made contact with their attorney. I've had a conversation with their attorney, so we're waiting to hear back. I'm confident this will, this will resolve itself.
And I think based on the discussion we had at the last meeting on this, that we discussed it, the intent was the money would be used for beautification, similar to what the bridge would be.
Yeah, Center Village identified several other options for consideration beyond beautification. They identified using the funds to do a study or feasibility study for a potential beautification project. The other one was other physical improvements that may not be directly related to beautification. And then I think another one was general studies that would benefit the Center Village area. So that's all kind of to be determined. But I think they were just, they were brainstorming some ideas.
Yeah.
I also dropped the ball about one of my committees. The L I D committee, the low impact development. We are in the process of higher, of interviewing candidates for the consultant. And we had three candidates. One is, well, anyway, we had three candidates and they were, at least one of them was quite different in their approach to the project. And then we had some difficulty. We had very close votes on, we made a grid, a matrix of a number of different criteria to distinguish between the three candidates. And I think it was fifteen, fifteen and nineteen were the vote totals, the low number being more a better score. So we didn't feel like that was a good way to, we need to go to the, to the Select Board and propose who we want to propose as the consultant and we need to have more agreement amongst ourselves. So now we're trying to figure out another, another meeting to have another conversation to try and hone in on that a bit more because there's some question about exactly what is, what is meant to be the work product and to whom is it meant to apply? So, you know, what is it for, is it for homeowners to wild their lawns or is it for developers in making developments? And so that's where we are.
Okay.
In the process.
All right. Anita, anything from your committees? Okay. John?
In the, I wanted to mention the NIMCOG Council will not be meeting during August, so our next meeting will be in September. But I don't have any other updates at this time.
All right. Sarita?
I don't.
Mike?
Very dull couple of weeks.
All right. A lot of people on vacation. Concom met last night. They, the Stedman Street, one fifty-two Stedman, the solar farm for them was continued. Two forty-two Billerica Road started their hearing. They start, the, the commission started discussing with the developers on two fifty-five Princeton Street, an invasive management plan and R D A for the next three years. That'll continue next week or next meeting. And then I found out that on Thursday, August fourteenth, which is tomorrow, at noon, there'll be a gap analysis update given to the staff in room two hundred. So Evan, I'm assuming you will be there?
I will be there.
Okay, great. I'm not, I wouldn't be able to attend, so if you can provide some updates, that'd be great. It'd be good to hear what the next steps are going to be. And if there are any slides or anything to share, that'd be great if you could share. I know the Conservation Commission was curious about that same information and any slides to share or anything like that, so.
I don't have anything to share at this point.
I figured. All right. Any other?
Before you move on, the next Board of Appeals meeting is September fourth. That's a busy agenda because they took August off. Our first, our first A D U application will appear on that agenda. As you may recall, for people who choose not to comply, particularly with some of the, the design standards, driveways, curb cuts, they do have the legal right to petition the zoning board. So that first one is scheduled for September fourth meeting. Just other items related to ADUs, I believe the Building Department just issued their first occupancy permit for an A D U. Maybe a dozen that have been applied for. We continue to get numerous inquiries on a weekly basis.
Okay.
Sometime over the next couple of meetings, I'll likely provide some council emails to the Planning Board, which speaks kind of back to the Housing Production Plan. The Planning Board's role is likely going, likely should be to do continuous review and amendments or refinements as necessary. And the, the proceedings on September fourth is likely a first example of that. See how all that procedurally plays out, how it plays out from a, from a merit standpoint, all understanding that it's a, that it's a Dover use and.
Yep.
So I, so just, I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thanks. I think it'll also be good, maybe starting in September, to start getting some additional updates on where we're at with the threshold and things like that. So as new projects come in, we keep that in mind in terms of, because if we've got a lot of onesies popping up with the ADUs and, and stuff, we may run into some threshold problems in the future. If we don't have larger projects, also keeping some balance with the affordable housing. I think it might be good to get regular updates, maybe once a month or something like that on.
A quarter.
Or, yeah, something like that on what our status is and if we should start thinking about some of those bigger projects that we might need to encourage more affordability. Okay. Thank you. Any other new business or items?
Do the minutes.
Yep, that's next. All right, so the minutes of June eleventh. Has everyone read those?
I skimmed them.
Anita, you were not there, so you can't vote.
Because I didn't read them, so I'm abstaining anyways.
What's that?
Well, you weren't there. All right, if everyone's good with it, I will take a motion.
I'll move that we approve the minutes of June eleventh.
A motion by Deirdre, a second by Mike. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
One abstention.
One abstention? All right. And then June twenty-fifth. Everyone's good with it, I will take a motion.
The only thing I saw to push on that was I, my name is spelled incorrectly, which is a huge issue, but it's I E., not Y.
Do you know specifically where?
Um, I think it was when we talked about the Cushion Bridge place.
Okay.
They've got it spelled, and I asked you why, but it's I E. Again, it's not a major issue, but everywhere else in the, the minutes, it's spelled correctly.
Not a problem. So with the correction for Marcy's name in the Cushion Bridge area being the one change, I will take a motion.
Move to approve the minutes of June twenty-fifth.
Motion by Deirdre, a second by Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
I will abstain.
And one abstention from Anita, again. All right. We still have a few more minutes before seven o'clock.
Want to do the continuances?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
That's a great idea.
So Chelmsford Mall, two sixty-five, two seventy-nine Chelmsford Street, twenty Manhattan Street, three Kachrina Road. They have submitted a request for a continuance until.
Yeah, this said August thirteenth on the agenda.
I believe it's to September tenth.
Yeah, so September tenth.
Oh, there's a letter.
Because we're not meeting later.
Yep. We're not meeting later in August, so it'd be September tenth.
Yeah.
I'll move the, the continuance.
Moved by Mike.
Second.
Second by Anita. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right. One continuance.
Love a good consensus.
And the next one is one ninety-one, one ninety-five Riverneck Road has requested a continuance until, again, September tenth. So I will take a motion. Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Anita. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. That is continued. You're still not at seven o'clock yet.
Should we take a break? Because people seem to have a lot of conversing that they need to do.
We will take a three minute break. Recession until seven o'clock.
It's interesting how the audio works because it's picking up some things and then not picking up others.
It's a little bit, it's a little bit shorter. She probably cut out that much. It was in bad need. Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you.
I like the color too.
Thank you.
I was trying to figure out, like, I'm like, something's different, but I can't figure it. Waivers are asking.
All right, it is seven o'clock, so we will come back to order. Um, first on the agenda is a new public hearing for two forty-two Billrica Road. Yep.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, Douglas Duchesne from Finnern and Nicholson here this evening representing toward Independent Living and Learning, Inc., uh, TIL, Inc., as we will refer to it going forward. I'd like to introduce the team I have with me here tonight. Uh, first, Daphna Crowe Gordon, who is the founder and president of TIL, Inc. Um, Giovanni Fodera, who is our engineer, from Fodera Engineering. Uh, Robert Passione, did I correct you?
Course not.
Um, who is our architect. Uh, Vincent Nazar and Joe Parquet from Avatar Construction, which is the company slated to do the construction. Um, I'll just give a quick outline of my presentation. I'm gonna give you a quick project summary. You're gonna hear a couple of minutes about TIL, Inc. Um, then we'll go over the site, the proposed use, required permits and waivers. And then I will have, uh, Giovanni and, um, Robert provide you an overview of the site plans and the architectural plans. Then I'll jump back and just give you a quick understanding of our hours of operation, our traffic and circulation, our off-street parking, and then the justification for our parking reduction request. So we will move through it quickly, but I want to be comprehensive. So, um, project summary. Um, essentially what we're looking to build is, uh, referred to in the industry as an adult day habilitation center. Uh, and the, the proposed project will consist of a new commercial development located within your IA zone at two forty-two Billrica Road. Um, it's in your IA zone, but it's also in your Aquifer Protection District and lies within the groundwater protection zone in town. Uh, the proposed development includes construction of a twenty-one thousand five hundred and seven square foot building to be used, uh, entirely by TIL. Uh, the site improvements will include associated parking, a small recreational courtyard, uh, for our clients, a stormwater management facilities, obviously, and then utility connections and landscaping. So with that, I would like to turn things over to Daphna just for a moment to give you just a quick understanding about TIL and what we're gonna do here in the town of Chelmsford.
Daphna?
Thank you. Um, as you've heard, my name is Daphna Crowe Gordon. I'm the founder and CEO of TIL. I started the organization in nineteen eighty, so it is our forty-fifth anniversary this year. And it was started in response to the fact that families did not have any alternatives if they had a child or any family member with a developmental or intellectual disability or with autism other than even, either remaining at home, not having the right supports, or going into very, very large institutions. Massachusetts had seven of them where more than eighty-four hundred people were housed. So back in the late seventies, that's when we really started the movement of being able to create what is now a community-based system. And I'm very proud to have been a part of that whole, uh, possibility so that now individuals really have many alternatives, either for living situations or for families to get supports vocational and be a member of the community. So TIL is a five oh one C three nonprofit organization. Uh, as I said, we've been around for forty-five years. We have eighty-five different sites in eastern Massachusetts and southern New Hampshire. They include sixty-eight group homes where four to five individuals live together and really create an alternative family for them together with their family. They are all staffed. In addition to that, uh, where people live also is important, but where they work is equally important. So what we are proposing today is a day habilitation center. We have three of them. One of them is very close to here in Billrica, and that's actually the place that we are looking to build. We rent space in Billrica. And we always like to own our own space because we can design it the way that we want. We can really have the flexibility to, to grow, to really give people the opportunities they need. So the day habilitation centers, we run one in Watertown, a large one in Chelsea, and a large one in Billrica, which will be replaced by the Chelmsford one. What goes on in the day habilitation centers is essentially educational services so that people can be as independent as possible wherever it is that they live or work or volunteer. We teach life skills, we teach daily activity skills. We really are supports to families if the individuals go back home or supports to their residential if they go back to our group homes. Um, in addition, there's recreation that goes on, uh, since you won't have a chance to visit our eighty-five sites. I thought pictures speak a thousand words. So the individuals that go look like this, they might be your family members, they might be your neighbors. Uh, they are individuals, as I said, who are born with an intellectual disability or at a certain point in their life, they might have an acquired brain injury, which happens as a result of some medical occurrence or substance abuse, um, or any kind of issue. But it happens when they are adults, so we help them to regain and get back to where they were. But the ninety percent of the individuals are either people who have autism or have an intellectual disability. We're very involved in the communities where we work. Uh, we offer employment for the individuals who are staffed. Uh, there are people who are occupational therapists, physical therapists, teachers, educators, and the activities there are really the things that we're engaged in. Uh, we provide a lot of the supports to food shelters, to animal shelters. Uh, we're part of the community as far as recreation. We're consumers, so we always feel that it's important that we really be value-added to the communities that we are in. And as I said, we're in thirty-five different towns. Uh, so those are some of the ways that we, we are part of the communities. Those are some of the day haps that you were looking at and the individuals that, uh, participate and benefit from it. I don't know if people have questions or that's the beginning and end of my presentation because I wanted to make it brief and not keep, uh, keep the agenda going. Okay?
Thank you, Daphna. So with that, I'd like to move on to a, a discussion of the site itself. Um, a, a quick, um, plan here. Uh, I'm sure most of you are familiar with two, the area of two forty-two Billrica Road. Um, you can see we've outlined the site in, in blue. Uh, so the site is two forty-two Billrica Road. It is a one point three acre site located within your IA zone and also within the Aqua Protection District. The site is located less than one mile north of exit seventy-nine on Route three. Uh, as you know, the neighboring uses include office and commercial uses, and I believe there may be some limited, uh, residential use in that area, but it's generally a, uh, industrial A use zone. This site has been designed to ensure safe, circulating, and a sustainable design that we believe is in compliance with all of your local and state regulations, with the exception of the few minor, uh, waivers we'd like to discuss. Um, as was presented, uh, TIL provides essential educational programming support and therapeutic services for individuals with developmental disabilities. The facility will operate, uh, during typical workday hours with minimal evening or weekend usage, if any. Uh, clients are primarily transported by scheduled vans or private vehicles and dropped off at the facility. Drop-off hours are typically between eight-thirty and nine-thirty in the morning, and pickup begins, uh, around two-thirty and is essentially completed around three-thirty or so. Um, essentially, none of our clients are driving, so they're all relying on transportation to be dropped off and picked up. Um, there are no, uh, overnight accommodations, uh, proposed at this location. Uh, as Daphna said, they do have other residential facilities throughout the state, uh, but that is not, um, a use proposed at this site. Our building will include offices, program rooms, recreational space, um, and staff support areas. Uh, the building will include a kitchen area designed to support basic food handling functions such as refrigeration, food warming, hand washing, and storage of, uh, you know, kitchen utensils and plates and supplies. Uh, lunch preparation is part of the life skills classes, uh, which does occur in that kitchen area. Um, in working with staff and, and our engineers, we have concluded that we need the following permits. Uh, site plan review, a special permit under your Aquifer Protection District because we are exceeding fifteen percent impervious on the site. Uh, a land disturbance permit due to the fact that we are disturbing just over an acre of, of the site. Um, a notice of intent. Uh, we actually had our opening hearing last night with the Conservation Commission, so we are in that path, uh, in parallel. Uh, a groundwater protection zone compliance review by the Board of Health. And, uh, that was, question was raised last night at Conservation with respect to PFAS. So we will be discussing that. Um, and then, of course, we'll need eventually building permits, uh, street opening permits. Uh, with respect to, respect to requested waivers, um, I've got four, five on the chart and an additional one. Um, and, and these waivers are relating to the, um, parking lot design. Uh, the fact that our two site egresses are only eighty-six feet apart, and I believe your pilot requires ninety feet of separation. Uh, a wa, a waiver, uh, for the fact that our pavement area is twenty thousand square feet, which requires thirty thousand square feet of internal planted areas, while the project is proposing eighteen forty-five square feet of internally planted areas. However, we do have a twelve hundred and twenty-two square foot infiltration basin, which will be vegetated in the front of the site, uh, that we haven't taken into our account with respect to meeting our internal planting requirements. Uh, and that, with, if you count that, we would exceed your three thousand square foot requirement, but we didn't want to assume you would count that. Um, we'll talk a little bit later in detail about parking spaces, but we are loo- looking for a waiver, um, with respect to the number of parking spaces. And lastly, we're, um, requesting a waiver from the frontage landscaping buffer, um, as we have only nine feet between our transformer area and the frontage. And lastly, and I haven't listed it here, but we will discuss it, uh, we are looking, uh, for a, um, a waiver from your requirement for a full traffic study. Uh, we have provided you, um, a significant amount of traffic generation, uh, information, and so we'd like to present that to you and, and obtain your opinion with respect to whether or not you'll need more or, uh, approve our waiver. So with that, I am gonna turn things over to, uh, first, um, to Giovanni, um, to, uh, go over the site plan and just give you a quick overview of the, um, stormwater system, which I know is being reviewed by, um, town engineers, so, um. But we do want to just give you guys a quick overview of what it is. It, it won't be long. And then, uh, Robert's gonna come up and just, uh, show you the pictures of the building and explain the design of the building. Then I'll come back and we'll get into the nitty-gritty of the, the parking and the, and the, uh, waivers. And then we're gonna answer any questions that you have. So with that, Giovanni?
Thank you, Doug. Um, good, good evening, members of planning board. Uh, my name is Giovanni Fodera. I'm the principal engineer for their engineering base in Danvers, Mass. Project engineer of the project, um, representing TIL. And I'll just go over summary, some, some of which Doug already mentioned, but I'll just kind of go over it, um, again. It's a one point three acre site located in the limited industrial zoning district and also within the Aquifer Protection District. It's currently vacant and overgrown with vegetation, but it formerly held a single-family house, uh, that was demolished in si- uh, two thousand eighteen. There are bordering vegetated wetlands in the rear, uh, that, with steep slopes that, uh, are directed down towards the wetlands. Uh, onsite soils were tested by ten test pits, um, around the site. They all yielded similar results of having sandy soils. Um, sto- uh, the seasonal high water table was encountered anywhere between six to over ten feet deep, but no water was encountered during testing. Uh, the, the seasonal high water table was determined by, uh, redocks, uh, within the sand, so. Uh, proposed conditions, uh, the building will be a twenty-one thousand five hundred square feet, about twenty-one thousand five hundred square feet, uh, building, uh, with associated parking, drop-off, landscaping, and a recreational courtyard. Uh, circulation into the site will be a one-way in, one-way out with circulation around the building, and it's been designed to accommodate a fire truck and emergency vehicles, uh, for safety. Um, parking, we're proposing twenty-two parking spots, uh, one of which will be an ADA compliant spot, um, van accessible. Um, and there will be a loading zone, um, kind of somewhat in the front entry of the building that can accommodate eight vehicles simultaneously. Uh, the, the traffic that will be generated for the proposed use, um, is estimated to be about twenty-one to twenty-two vehicles during the AM and peak, uh, PM peak hours, um, with approximately a hundred seven trips per day total. Um, that's based on the ITE manual for an adult daycare, um, which we are, you know, in, in adult, uh, day habilitation, so it's a, you know, relatively different use, but according to the ITE, that was the most similarly matched, uh, use that we could compare, um, traffic volumes. So for s- the stormwater management, uh, that's proposed onsite, we have two BMPs that are proposed. There's an infiltration basin that's proposed in front of the building between the street and the building. Um, that will capture all roof runoff, and that info, that sto- that infiltration basin has an overflow that's directed to a secondary BMP. The secondary BMP is in a subsurface, uh, stormwater infiltration system that's on the east, uh, side of the site that's under the parking lot. Um, and all the proposed impervious surface onsite is going to be contained and controlled and directed to either one of these BMPs. And the system is designed to entirely capture and infiltrate a one-hundred-year storm entirely with no overflow. The, uh, recreational area that's proposed in the rear of the site, as Doug mentioned, um, that will be a fenced-in courtyard for client use. Uh, the proposed landscaping around the site, um, if we could go to the proposed landscaping plan, actually, if you want to scroll down, um, just to follow, this is the proposed landscaping plan. So proposed landscaping, we have, uh, landscaping buffer strips along the sides of the property, and we have landscaping, uh, in the front between the building and the street. Uh, all the plantings that are proposed are drought tolerant, uh, and there's no proposed irrigation system, um, to conserve water. There is proposed snow storage onsite. It is, uh, outlined on the, uh, site plans. The snow storage, uh, will have their designated area outside of landscaping areas. It'll be on the outside of the parking lot, um, uh, along the sides, and, uh, it'll remain outside of the one-hundred-year, uh, buffer zone, uh, one-hundred-foot buffer zone. Um, utilities of, of the site, we are going to be, uh, connecting to public, um, water and sewer. There will be an onsite generator, and, um, there is a proposed fire hydrant onsite. Uh, and for trash removal, we will have an onsite enclosed, uh, dumpster. And for trash removal, we will have an on-site enclosed dumpster area, and trash will be removed by a private trash removal company during a regular, during a regular schedule. And that's what I have for my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions as we go, but for right now, I will hand it over back to Doug.
I just wanted to give you a few tidbits from our Conservation Commission meeting last night. Evan, can you just go to a plan that shows? There we go, any of those with the buffer. So just so that we're clear, the...
Can you point it out?
This is our wetlands back here in the easily-associated twenty-five, thirty, fifty, and hundred-foot buffer zones. We've designed this to meet all of your conservation regulations with respect to setbacks and no build and no building setbacks, and the commission was happy to hear that last night. Their biggest concern was with respect to tree loss, or one of the concerns, respect to tree loss. You know, they're trying to... So, we're removing approximately twenty-six trees from inside the buffer zone and nine trees within the closest, the thirty, within the fifty-foot no disturb. So, the commission asked us to look at actually providing additional trees along the slope of the twenty-five-foot no disturb zone. And also, Giovanni mentioned the play area, the recreational area. That's outlined back here. We're proposing to use it as sort of a storage lay-down area during construction, and then when we finish, when we finish the project, that'll then be, you know, finished when the parking is paved. It was currently, originally shown as being a completely paved area because we do have a lot of clients in wheelchairs, and that makes it easier for them to access. But in discussing the Conservation, with Conservation Commission last night, they asked us to look at whether or not we could make part of that grass so as to, you know, provide more green space and more infiltration, and also an opportunity to provide some additional trees. So, I have talked to my client, and we are going to redesign this. It will result in a lower total impervious and some more trees. So, we're going to do a grass with some pathways, maybe wooden pathways for the wheelchairs or whatever. I just wanted to sort of mention those. The last thing was, we had originally proposed to have the dumpster down in this area, and the commission asked us to look at maybe pushing it out a little farther. So, we're going to do that as well. So, those are two things that you'll hear about when we next speak. With that, Robert, thank you for waiting.
Good evening. My name is Rob Passione. I am the architect and owner of RP Architectural Studio, and we are in Wayland, Massachusetts. Let's wait for the rendering to come up. Okay, so, looking at the rendering here, this is the front corner view of the new proposed building. So, as Doug had mentioned, we're a little bit over twenty-one thousand square feet. It's a two-story structure. The primary first floor, which we can look at once we go through the rendering, is most of the program space for the clients, and then the upper floor is more of the support space for staff. Looking at this front elevation here, we've designed the front entry with a good amount of glass to let lots of light in, give lots of transparency from the street, so you basically understand that this is the front entry of the building. We've created a bunch of sort of curved overhangs to give it, again, a little more interest, to try to really accent that front corner. On the left-hand side, you can see there's a little bit of a taller tower, which we actually have as the stair tower, so we use that as a bit of an accent as well to kind of frame that front entry. The building materials here, we have really two different sidings that we're going with. And the main body of the building in the back is a type of material called ACRE, which is, has a very similar appearance to wood, but it's actually made out of rice hulls. So, it's a very, very sustainable product. And then, at the stair tower that I just mentioned, and to the right of that, on the other side of the glass entry area, is another accent area that we are doing a ribbed metal panel in a vertical orientation. So, we just put that on there to kind of give a little bit of, a little luxury to the front of the building to kind of really make it pop. So, again, overall, we're, you know, trying to put as much glass as we can, so we put a bunch of, you know, fairly large six-foot by six-foot windows along the sides of the building just to let a lot of natural light in. We have some overhangs as we go down towards the back of the building on that first floor as where that van's shown in this rendering. That is where the drop-off area is going to occur, so we put small overhang there. Most of the clients that come to the building get dropped off, will be dropped off on that, that side of the, side of this elevation. About halfway down is where the main entry door for their entry is. So, kind of an overview of the outside of the building. Plan-wise, so, there's a lot here, but just to kind of briefly go through it, there's a number of classrooms on the perimeter of the building at the first floor. We centrally located the teaching kitchens, so there's those two kitchens kind of right in the middle there. The rear of the space is a physical therapy room with a changing area. And in the front of the plan, we have more support space. There's a computer room, small office, small nursing station, then obviously the front entry elevator is also located in the front there. At the second floor, we just have, again, just some offices, a training room, small kitchen area for staff, and then in the back is a larger just program, educational program area, so just a large open space. Then elevations, you know, these are just kind of your 2D elevations of all sides of the building. Again, you can see we put a bunch of windows in and everything, not as fancy as the rendering, so just calling out materials here and whatnot. So, basically, that's an overview, so happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Robert. So, guys, I will run through the last of this briefly. I know you have probably read some of this material in our application, and I know you'll read this later. So, I, again, I won't get lost in the details. But hours of operation, eight to four. We are not open on weekends or holidays, and there are no overnight activities or extended hours anticipated. So, it's pretty regular weekday operation. Staff typically arrives shortly before opening and departs shortly after closing, while client drop-off and pickup times are staggered within that one-hour window at the beginning and the end of the day. This predictable and limited schedule supports a very efficient site circulation and minimizes traffic impacts, not only on Bill Ricker Road, but within the site. It's a very coordinated, organized, timed operation, and they've been doing it at a number of other facilities, and it has worked wonderfully. Traffic and circulation, Giovanni touched a little bit on it, but essentially, we've provided you our traffic circulation, traffic information, and this goes into why, you know, why we anticipate that we will not have impacts on Bill Ricker Road, based on the ITE manuals, as Giovanni said. We're looking at a hundred and seven trips a day, twenty-two trips in the AM peak, and twenty-one trips in the PM peak. The facility's traffic will be spread out over that hour in the day, in the morning and in the evening. So, again, we really have a controlled program for the traffic. We're going to feature a one-way in, one-way in internal circulation patent with two curb cuts. That way, it's, makes in and out much easier. The forty-eight-foot truck can fully circulate the site, as we've confirmed to you in our filing. And as I did mention earlier, the center offset of those two driveways is, I believe, eighty-four feet. Your bylaw requires ninety, and we're seeking a waiver for that, that difference. The site is located on the outer concave side of a gentle curve along Bill Ricker Road, which provides excellent site distance in both directions. The measured distances exceed four hundred feet in each way, each direction therefore satisfying your zoning. Given the modest traffic volumes and the controlled circulation and drop-off and the compliant visibility of the site, we do believe that a full traffic site is unwarranted and would request you allow a waiver from that. And then, lastly, I know you love to hear that. Off-street parking and the drop-off design, and this is very important to us and is based on years and years of experience in operating these facilities. Under your bylaw, as Giovanni had mentioned, where the closest category would be daycare use, and that requires one parking space per four students, one parking space per employee on the largest shift, and a dedicated drop-off zone to accommodate a minimum of five vehicles. The proposed adult dehabilitation center is expected to serve approximately eighty clients a day when we're full, with a staff of up to twenty on the largest shift. So, based on those figures, we would be required to have forty spaces plus the dedicated drop-off zone. We have proposed twenty-two off-street parking spaces, including the ADA compliant van space, although that's less than required. We believe it's justified based on the specific operational characteristics of this facility and the other facilities that DAFNA runs. We have well-known parking requirements at our other facilities, and they are operating well and have had no problems. And then, again, you know, all of our clients are dropped off and picked up by either private vehicles or vans or other group transportation modes. Virtually, none of them have driver's license, so we, you know, we're not faced with a requirement of client parking. The designated drop-off and pickup area is located adjacent to the building. It's designed to accommodate up to eight vehicles simultaneously. So, your bylaw requires five. We want to provide eight because we are so drop-off centric, you know? So, we want to make sure we are well configured for that. Additionally, we do have a separate parking spot allocated for the facility-owned vehicle. We haven't included that in our, in our employee, so technically, we'd have twenty-three spaces. That vehicle remains on-site most of the time, except when it's used for an occasional client transport or, you know, to pick something up and drop off. It's only used during business hours, and it's really not expected to impact parking or traffic. It's a, it's not a well-used vehicle. It's just used for emergencies and, you know, the rare occasion. All of the proposed parking, circulation, and drop-off features are shown in our plans and have been designed to meet and promote pedestrian safety and efficient on-site flow and in full compliance with ADA requirements and your zoning dimensional requirements. So, our spaces are all big enough. So, with that, I am going to just summarize the parking reduction justification, and we'll leave the last page where we go into very specifics. But basically, the proposed project includes twenty-two on-site, including one ADA and the one in-house vehicle that we talked about. This is fewer than the forty spaces that you require. However, for this particular use, based on our experience and current operations at other sites, we do believe that a reduction in the parking is justified. And again, I will leave it to the board to, it's just too dense for me to read. But as you'll see, it basically comes to, down to the fact that, you know, we, DAFNA's been doing this in a number of facilities, communities, and it's worked great, and we've been able to operate. So, with that, I will thank you for your time, and myself and the staff or the team are available to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Evan, do you have anything to add?
I don't have anything specific at this time.
Okay. One question I had is the proposed Dover amendment use. Is that a question that we have to answer, or is it clearly...
I think it's pretty self-evident that it qualifies. The board, as part of your discussions, ideally would acknowledge and agree. If for some reason you have a question, we can ultimately ask counsel.
Okay. So, let's start there, since that will impact a lot of other things. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about this qualifying as a Dover use? I didn't think so. It was pretty clear. All right. So, with that being said, let's take it around with any questions, comments, concerns. Let's try and keep it high-level and brief, since this is the first meeting, and we'll hold off on any stormwater questions until we get those results from DPW.
By and large, I'm favorable. It looks completely reasonable to me. About the only question I would have is, what would the mechanism be if the property were to change hands and go to a new use? Because we're, we might well be granting a very considerable parking reduction. And I want to make sure that if it came back to us, or if a different use were to go in, it would, it would get back to us for adjustment.
And if I remember the North Road discussion, it would...
Yes, we did discuss this with North Road.
Yeah. So, the parking reduction waiver would only be applicable to this Dover amendment use.
Okay.
If it changes hands, changes use, it has to come back for waivers.
Okay. And then, other than that, I have no questions.
Okay. Sarita?
Can this hear me? Can this hear me? All right. I have, I guess, a variety of questions. One of the things was with the curbing, that they're being, they're asking to not have. I do have concerns with that because when snow and everything else gets pushed up out of the area, which is paved, which has designated routes for the water to travel, now you're putting it outside, and, you know, it's just potential for damage. People for parking over the lines into those areas, again, by not having curbing, concerns me. I'm not sure what that back area is that's blocking the wetlands. Is that like a fence?
That is a retaining wall.
A retaining wall.
Drop-off retaining wall or retaining wall high?
This, the back of the property slopes significantly when you get back. So, this is actually a retaining wall, and then everything to this side will be contained, and, you know, the paved area will be here. And then, there's no disturbance proposed beyond that except for the new trees that we might have to put.
So, the retaining wall will be higher? Like, will the pavement be lower, or...
The pavement will be higher.
Could you come up to the microphone, please?
Yeah.
Thanks.
The pavement will be higher than the wetland side.
Okay. Are you proposing a fence there as well?
There is a proposed fence.
What type of fence?
I didn't spec out the specifics, but we can, you know, detail, detail that out.
Yeah, because especially with that courtyard area being adjacent, and if that's an area for use for play or otherwise easily, things can go over. So, curious what type of fencing you're going to be putting in to just make sure that that area, you know, doesn't get disturbed. On the generator, is there any shielding around the generator?
The generator is...
Could you come up to the microphone, please?
Okay, yeah.
You want us to stay up there? Or to the rendering.
Shielding, the only shielding that it would be, it will be on a raised curb. So, it'll be six inch higher. So, as for bollards, no, but there will be curbing around it. It's not going to be, you're not going to have, you know, the curbing will stop any...
I just, more meant for sound.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Is there, and I also heard earlier that there was potential for some residential around this. Where was the residential that was mentioned? You thought there might have been residential, but you weren't sure?
No, there was a residential. Home's a residential.
Oh.
Whenever you and you were talking, you had said some was...
Well, yeah, I was just, you know, in looking at the plan, you know, there's a couple of smaller structures on the opposite side of Bill Ricker Road, and I understood there might still be a couple of residential structures in there.
So, across from maybe these entranceways? I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
I will have to identify you that specific use directly across.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, there's a couple, I didn't know if they were looking for something. And the other thing was, I do like the idea of additional trees wherever you can put them, just because there's a loss of tree canopy all over Chumford. I know we've also discussed in the past, if they're not able to put all the trees, you know, could they potentially fund other trees in the town to be built for the amount that you're taking? That was something else. You mentioned there was a fire hydrant on the property. Where was that going?
The fire hydrant is located right here.
Okay. And where is the area where the cars are queuing up as they're dropping off? That was, I believe you said there was eight.
So the main entrance of the building is pretty much right here, as well as another entrance right here, there's another entrance here, but this right here will be the loading zone, that striped area.
Where the people would get out and...
Exactly.
And what is the width of that area?
That is nine feet wide.
Okay. And, I mean, that's, that's good for now. I, yeah, I guess only one other thing. You did mention about the fire truck going around. Do you have anything showing its path?
We submitted the plan with, to the fire department and with the office.
If you want to show it, you can pull it up.
No, that's okay. I'm good with it.
It is in the plans.
Then the only other thing I did notice was some of the light on the plan. I did notice there is some spillage of light, a small amount, over the property lines, so a little bit curious with the designs of those, where the zero limit is, and if that possibly...
So that lighting analysis was completed as if there were no landscaping, a landscaping buffer around. So the landscaping in actual, in actuality may have a better blockage off the property lines. And I do know it's very minimal on the outside of the property lines, as what's shown in the analysis, but like I said, the landscape, the proposed landscaping will block even more than what's shown on this analysis, so this is a good issue.
I understand. It's just a concern of mine, plus the spillage towards the wetlands.
Okay, yeah.
All right.
We can look at tightening that up.
Thank you. And just for the record, I just looked on Google Maps, and it's a real estate business across the road. It does look like a house, but it is Real Estate Office.
Thank you, Ver.
All right, John?
Just in looking at the attic rendering on the front of the building, I may be mistaken, but it looked like on one in the front here in the corner, and I get you, you're doing a lot of glass to try to bring in natural light and make it look attractive. I, the part that I may be mistaken on, I was looking at it from a distance, it looked like the glass went down pretty low to the, to the ground in some areas. I was going to suggest, would it make sense around that entrance area to come in? You know, certainly I realize a lot of the vans are going to be driven by people that are licensed to do that work, but would it make sense to have some kind of bollards for safety in front of the, just the area where the glass is, so that it wouldn't be vulnerable should a vehicle, for some reason, go out of control? And it just seems like in the news we're hearing more and more incidences of...
There is a four-foot sidewalk, too, which I assume is raised. So we got a four-foot sidewalk that would, and then the nine-foot width, and then that, by the way, just so that you probably met, sorry, but that will allow us a fourteen-foot free-travel way for the traffic to circulate, and then you have the parking. So we, we really think it'll keep that flow very well, especially with the one-way.
One thing to add to that, keep in mind, a one-way traffic flow, minimum requirements for the local bylaws is eleven-foot wide traffic flow. We're at fourteen feet with what we have right here, so it's a comfortable, you know, maneuvering around.
Anything else?
No, that's all.
And Eva?
How many employees did you say would be working at this facility?
Twenty at the largest shift.
Okay.
So we do have full-time people, we do have part-time people, so the, the flow of employees ebbs and flows during the day as well.
And you're proposing twenty-two spots?
Yes.
So there's really not a lot. First of all, I think this is a great idea. I'm very excited about this type of facility coming here. I'm a little concerned about the parking spots, because it really doesn't allow for any growth in services that you may decide to add or not add, let alone if you're having a vendor come in who wants to sell you a new software package or whatever. If you could maybe think about, I understand you don't need the forty-four, but maybe a little bit more parking to provide that for the future.
Yes, I, and as you, you know, as you know, the Conservation Commission was thrilled that we were reducing parking.
Yeah, no.
And asked us, and asked us to look to reduce more pavement, in which we said, you know, we're, we're at the bare minimum here. So we will look, Anita, and, you know, I, do the best we can.
This will lead into my next question about conservation, because I am also very concerned about too much pavement. You're cutting down a lot of trees.
Twenty-six.
What am I seeing in the back? Because this doesn't... So am I going to be seeing, was it Pine Road? Like, were all the, like, is, are there still going to be trees there that are going to prevent me from seeing what's behind there?
Well, we can, we're not proposing to disturb any of the trees within the no-disturb zone. So yes, there are trees in there. I'm not sure we show them, do we show the existing trees on the existing? So if you could throw that up, maybe, have a please?
You said you're taking twenty-six trees and nine trees within the fifty-foot buffer zone.
Right.
But none within the no-disturb and the wetlands.
Right, so these existing trees, which are only the larger trees, you know, we, we don't, so these larger trees, there, here's the twenty-five foot no-disturb. So all of those trees are, will remain, and then the commission is looking for us to, you know, replace some of those trees in that location. And then, these, of course, are the twenty-six trees we're taking down. So...
Yeah, because what's nice about this property...
I have to be clear, though, I don't want to misspeak. I believe the commission is counting only the trees that are being removed within the hundred-foot buffer zone. So essentially, when I say twenty-six trees, I believe that's the twenty-six trees that
Because there's other trees up there.
The trees out front, those will theoretically be addressed by our proposed landscaping, where we're going to be providing significant trees on both sides and in the front.
So how many total trees are you taking down to do this project? You don't have to count it. Next time when you come back.
Well, if there's twenty-six there...
No, you don't have to count it now, come back with that.
Mm-hmm.
About twenty-three in the front.
Like fifty-two.
Twenty-six and twenty-three.
So I think the conservation purview is only for the buffer area.
Yeah.
We would be, essentially, our purview would be the rest of it.
Understood.
So if we wanted to ask for a similar type of thing that the Conservation Commission was asking for, one-for-one planting for any that are removed, that would be on us to request that for the front half.
My, right, my concern is, right now, this is a wooded lot, and I don't see what's going on in progress half behind there, which is a mess. And this is one-twenty-nine, and I don't want to see what's going on. Like, I, like, with this building, I want that, I still don't want to see what's going on back there, because we have, like, that's my concern, is to add value, not all of a sudden I draw, like, we cut down all the trees and I'm saying...
Expose us.
Yeah, expose our, you know...
A sore.
Yeah. It's like, let's keep it in the closet, you know, like, put a closet in front of it so no one can see all that in the back.
I, I understand that, and again, give us an opportunity to, to address that. I will say...
With maybe some more parking spaces, maybe do all of that. That's my wish list.
Understand that not only are we not touching this, but all of the existing vegetation from this wetland area to the back of the property is going to remain untouched. So you are correct, you know, we're, we're moving here in the buffer zone, and we're going to come back with you, with a plan and to the commission that's going to show how we're going to address that. My concern is our ability to replicate all of these trees, and again, while we can certainly front-load the here and along the sides, I, I do believe the building will give you some of that protection back there.
I understand.
But if you walk around the building, then we'll have that buffer zone planted for you, so...
In adding to that, you, you mentioned pile drive in the back, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so our site is elevated higher than pile drive. I believe, off the top of my head, I want to say it's about fifteen, maybe twenty feet higher than the back pile drive site. So that also gives a better, you know, visibility and buffer, as well, as well as adding fence along that back retaining wall. So I do feel comfortable there would be that, that barrier, so...
And on that point, does the, the planning board have thoughts on the type of fence you'd like us to put along there? In addition to the, I'm sorry, Evan, if you could go to the, oh no, this one shows it. So in addition to the fencing along the back here, we, we are actually going to fence the entirety of the rec area. So it's going to be a double fence here. Does the commission, excuse me, does the planning board have some thoughts on the fence? You know, Giovanni didn't spec anything because we figured we'd talk with you guys.
So I was actually going to get to that in my comments.
All right, well, we can wait.
I just have one more question.
Yeah.
I noticed on a couple of the slides, like, you're showing your other facilities, there's like a cafe and gifts. Will there be anything like that here?
No.
Oh.
That's actually a separate...
I do, they do, actually.
You need a space to park, though.
I know. That's not in the company, it's my whole process.
You can't be bringing in retail customers.
Yeah, yeah, but I was kind of like, oh, that would be really nice to add there.
That, if I, if I understand correctly, definitely, that's actually a standalone facility through your...
We have what's called, it's not a dehabilitation, it's called community-based day and appointment service.
Could you come up to the microphone for me, please? This is important information.
Where you get your best coffee, right?
Exactly. I'm with you. We actually have two separate freestanding cafes that are part of educational and vocational training. So one is called Essence of Time Catering Cafe in Hyde Park, and we have a culinary kitchen, and we actually provide two million lunches every single year, where people are trained under a chef, and they provide the lunches to schools. And there's a walk-in cafe and gift shop, and we have the same in Nashua. So we would love to do that here, but it does get into parking and it does get into different kitchen facilities. So possibilities are endless, so I am always open to new options.
Thank you. Deidra?
I just wanted to clarify, I was a little confused about that conversation about residential. My understanding is there's nothing residential involved in this plan and this property.
None, none. My statement, and it may have not been correct, is that I just wanted to give you a feel of our neighbors. And I said, you know, there's commercial, there's office, there's all the stuff that's down there, and I thought there were still a couple of residents along the road, but I've just been corrected, they've now been turned into commercial buildings. So, no, we're not proposing any residential, I was just trying to give you a feel of the area. I apologize.
Back and forth. Okay, and then I just would like to reiterate my agreement with other board members about the, the importance of replacing the tree canopy, to the extent that you're able, especially, you know, at least most of the numbers that you're taking out.
Mercy?
So first of all, I really like this idea, this plan, like, this is, you know, something that I think lots of areas could use. As an educator, I see this as, you know, I have some of these students who are artistic, what do they do is they, you know, exit out of the schools, where do they go, how do their families support them, so this is a great thing. But also on the educator side, I look at this, and I agree with Anita, too, I'm just very concerned that there's literally only two additional spaces. What happens if you need to bring in extra, you know, therapists or people to work with these, these young adults, these therapies and other things like that? We are not providing parking for them. If their families need to come in or advocates need to come in to speak to you in regards to them, where do they park? We see this happening in schools all the time. You put in for exactly how many classrooms you have, and then we have to, we forget all the support staff, all these other people that come in, and there is no parking in schools for any of these things. So if you need to add just one staff member, you have one additional parking spot if someone needs to come in. So that was my biggest concern, is that they're really, you know, yes, we can reduce it down because they're, these, they're not going to be driving themselves there, so you're not going to have all these extra cars coming in, but there are other people that might need to be coming into the facility for different things, or you might have to increase your staff, and where do they now park? So that was my biggest concern with this.
Sure, if you'd like to.
Numbers that we're proposing for this site are exactly the numbers of the Bill Ricker place, so the numbers do work. I agree with you. There's, as soon as you have a closet, you go, I'm running out of closet space, and as soon as you have parking, you run out of parking spaces. It is a fluid, somewhat fluid. There are the stable staff who are there, and then there are the consultants who do come at different times during the week. The other thing is, when the vans are not doing drop-off and pickup, you really do have that, that whole lane that's available for families, for specialty consultants to use it, and they would be coming during the non-drop-off and pickup hours. But if you have any influence with conservation, by all means, we'd love some more parking spaces, but I do know that it works in Bill Ricker, and we have very similar numbers, because these are the folks who are going to be coming to this place.
I just ask a quick question. Did you all look at diagonal parking versus the straight parking, to see if you could fit a few more spaces?
We did take a look into that, and we found that it was somewhat negligible.
Maybe get you one or two more?
Yeah, I mean, we can some, we can maybe look, revisit it, but I remember when we were looking at it, it was kind of just like, it's probably not worth it, no. Yeah, that, too. It also requires a wider drive aisle, so we would need to, you know, create a lesser landscape buffer, you know, so we're eating into the snow storage in the landscaping area, so we'd be adding more pavement, and it just seemed like it was, wasn't really practical.
This is in the overlay district, where we have, you couldn't go up higher in less footprint? Because we can go higher in this district, from, like, get you the same square footage, but instead of two floors, three floors, which will allow you maybe a little bit more parking, a little bit more greenery around the space. Is that an option?
I think we run into...
Sorry, I was, yeah, you know, go ahead. The licensing that's required for this program, there are certain people with different physical abilities or disabilities that are not allowed to use the second floor, even with an elevator. So having, there are certain people that will have to use the program space on the first floor, so it's, it's a balancing act. Because you might have noticed, on the second floor, there's a lot of open space, which is really teaching, training space, and a lot of physi, we have a big physical, not a gym, but really a lot of physical equipment, and some of the people from the first floor would have to have their own similar space downstairs, so it's a problem. Okay. And I've never really understood why, because hospitals and nursing homes and rehab centers are two and three floors, but this particular certification for mass health and public health doesn't allow us to use everybody, to use the whole space.
Great. So I also applaud this use. I think this is a great, great use of the spa, of the space, and unfortunately, my notebook is just deciding to turn off. I really like the architecture of the building. I think that is really nice and attractive. I am somewhat disappointed that there's no shop or cafe associated with this.
Put that on the third floor.
Because I think that that would be a really nice enhancement, too, to the community. No, it's just, it's fine, it's not power. I do share Sarita's concern about the curbing up at the top part of the, the plans. I am a big proponent of curbing, especially where there's plowing involved, so even sloped granite curbing would... So even sloped granite curbing would, I think, be ideal up there to prevent damage to the landscaping where there's plowing involved. For the fence on that back portion, I think some of my concerns about that would be for plowing damage. If you have a chain link fence, the snow would likely get plowed through the fence into the wetlands. So something more solid that actually has signs, no plowing into this area. Now that this is restarted, I can get my notes again. The facility in Bill Ricker, how many square feet is that facility?
Eighteen thousand, Mr. Chairman.
So this would be an increase in square footage. Actually, Bill Ricker wasn't mentioned in the narrative at all. It was Chelsea and Watertown. Chelsea had thirteen spaces, Watertown had twelve.
Just because of the mic.
Good exercise. Bill Ricker, since it's, we rented, it's a big industrial park, so we don't have designated spaces. So that's why I didn't list it because Chelsea and Watertown, we own and we have spaces that we've built. But I, I know for a fact how many cars there are, how many staff there are, and there's fewer than what we have here.
Okay. So there's no agreement with that ownership about how many?
There's about five buildings and everybody shares.
Okay. So the, let's see, fence, fence. I also share the concerns about the light bleeding across the lot lines, especially into the wetlands. So if you can take a look at that. The. Conserv, oh, the other thing I really liked, I went through the sustainability checklist and I really appreciate all of the, the work that you're going to put into that as well. Solar panels on the roof, potential lead certification, that's really good. So I really appreciate that. I do have significant concerns about the parking. I actually did a Google map of the Bill Ricker facility and there are two different views for Google map that shows that facility. And in one of the views, there are ten vans in parking spaces with their lift gates down waiting for clients. And in the other one, there are ten vans. So my concern is that if that loading zone only has room for eight, where are the others going to be queuing up, waiting for their clients? I'm assuming that was a pickup time because that's usually what I see, the transportation vans come a little early and wait for their clients. So I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about the overflow and where they would end up waiting. I don't know if there's a way to have the traffic circulation go in the opposite direction so that if there's overflow, it goes into some of the other, instead of coming out into the road, it goes the other way around the building. So I didn't know if that was a possible option. Because I don't think you can put the loading zone on the other side because that would shift the building too much and not allow traffic to flow. But if you change the direction of traffic and have the exit where the entrance is now, I didn't know if that would help.
Yes, they're queuing up around the building.
Yeah, you're queuing up around the building if it does end up queuing up.
And it'll still overflow into the road.
I'm really, I'm. The other thing about the trees, if there's a way to, whatever the number is that are removed from the front, if there's a way to, I know that you've got some in the landscaping, but whatever the difference is for that one-to-one ratio, if you could add them in the back where conservation is also having you add those, if you can fit those in there, that would be good. Then just in general, like I said, I, I really support this use. I really like the facility, everything about it. It's, it's unfortunately a really small lot. It would have been nice for a larger lot with a shop and a coffee.
Yeah, we can't change that rule, we're about three floors.
I know. So that's, that's all I have.
Well, we, we certainly appreciate your time and your, your comments and questions. And you know we're going to go back and provide you, next time we meet, an answer to all of your questions. Don't know if I can solve everything, but you know we will make every effort to address your concerns and.
Yep.
Because we are also excited about this facility and what it'll mean for the town, so. Thank you, and I would respectfully request that you continue us to your next available meeting.
Couple of things.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I did want to mention the traffic study. There was, before we get too far into it, there was a request to waive the traffic study. I think in this specific case, I don't see a really big need for it because it's not a big traffic generator. I think most of our concerns were around the parking, which wouldn't really be called out in a traffic study. So are people okay with weaving?
I would agree with you.
Yeah, okay.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
It's, it's, you know, it's.
Yeah, I don't think there'll be a big traffic impact on this. Okay.
I'm good with that.
So we're good with that.
I, I, I asked for a continuance, but I didn't know if you wanted to go to the audience.
Yes, we do.
Before we do that, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
So this being a public hearing, we are going to allow public to speak on this topic. If anyone wishes to speak, you may come up. Evan, is there anyone on Zoom?
No.
No one on Zoom, no one in person? So at this point, I will take a motion. Oh, yeah, we should do the letters first, thank you, John. Sorry, Mike.
I'll jump in on this one.
Okay, so.
So first from the fire department, from Captain Josh Abbott. Regarding two forty-two Bill Ricker Road, dear members of the board, the Fire Prevention Office respectfully submits the following comments and conditions for your consideration for the proposed adult daycare of two forty-two Bill Ricker Road co-compliance. All construction shall comply with applicable codes and regulations, including but not limited to the Massachusetts State Building Code, applicable Massachusetts CMRs, Mass General laws, relevant NFPA standards and Town of Chumsford bylaws. The office will review the project plans as part of the permitting process. Fire flow, a fire flow analysis shall be conducted and submitted to this office for review to ensure adequate water supply for fire protection. Site access, based on the submitted truck turning plans, site access is deemed adequate. Any future modifications to the site layout should require updated truck turning plans to confirm continued compliance. All onsite curbing shall either be sloped granite or mountable to accommodate emergency apparatus. Winter access, due to the identified pinch points within the site, the fire department may require snow removal from designated snow, from storage areas during winter conditions to maintain unobstructed access for emergency vehicles. We respectfully request this letter be, in the outlined conditions, be incorporated into the planning board's decision and entered into the public record. And then we have, we have from the building commissioner, Jose Negron. Let's see, dear applicant, should this project be approved by the planning board, please be advised that the building department will be enforcing reasonable regulations relating to setbacks, building coverage, building height, yard size as deemed allowed by law. Thank you. And then we have two letters stating no concerns. One's from the police department and one is from the treasurer collector's office regarding tax compliance. And then the last one, we have a, we do have a lengthy letter from the Department of Public Works. Sheila Joyce, project engineer. I'll try to summarize this in the interest of time. Site plan review, outstanding DPW engineering issues not addressed. During construction, care shall be taken, should be taken to maintain separation of at least ten feet horizontally from the edge of sewer services to the edge of water services. And it goes on to cite Massachusetts DEP and DEP standards. When sewers cross, must cross water mains, the sewer ma, sewer must be laid out such that the invert of the water line is at least eighteen inches above the crown of the sewer line. The long-term and perpetual care of the enclosed dumpster and dumpster pad, including emptying, will be the responsibility of the property owner. If applicable, onsite, onsite areas with slopes that exceed three to one must have stabilization. Appropriate signage should be included in proximity to infiltration basin prohibiting snow storage. Sewer comments, no increase to the Town of Chumsford sewer infrastructure shall be more than five hundred gallons per day. The applicant shall use, should analyze sewerage flow using Title V to, to, to determine required sewer allocation. It goes into a whole bunch of calculations. Recommendation for approval, building's occupancy should be limited to a hundred people in order to not exceed the allocated sewer flow demand. And then, and then the final parts are ownership of all O and M plans. The stormwater management plan must be, must comply with DEP and stormwater management policy. And then it lists several recommended conditions of approval. And since this is part of the agenda and everyone's had a chance to read this, I won't read every single one of those in the interest of time.
Thank you. Actually, Evan, I noticed that the, the, never mind, the DPW is there. The slides that were presented tonight, can we make sure that those are attached to the next agenda? Thanks. All right, so now I will take a motion.
You have it, a motion to continue, and when do we want to continue this, too?
September.
September tenth.
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 What else do we have on September tenth?
A lot.
Yeah, a lot.
It'll be a busy meeting.
Twenty-fourth?
Ooh, we, we, we're under a tight schedule and I promise I won't be as verbose. We will be precise in answering your questions and, thanks.
We should be able to get through things pretty quickly on September tenth. We also won't have the zoning stuff.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
All right, so motion by Mike to September tenth.
Second.
Second by Anita. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you for your time, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
All right, next up on the agenda, one fifty-two Stedman.
You ready?
Take it away.
Okay, good evening. My name's Bruce Haskell with Langdon Environmental and the engineer for the development of a solar PV and, and battery storage facility on the site that's known as the old Glenville cap landfill, which is located off at one fifty-two Stedman Street in Chelmsford. It's located right on the Lowell line. I thought what I could just quickly do is provide a site overview off of the, the plans there. Oh, so, sorry to introduce myself, but I'm also joined on, online by Anthony Shaw with Pro Generation Energy, who is the proponent for the development of the solar and battery storage facility out there. I just wanted to give you an overview of the site and I'll introduce you. Because it sort of is hidden, oriented on the plan, Route Three sort of runs east-west underneath here. Lowell, Chelmsford line runs across here. Lowell landfill is just, just to the, directly to the north of the site and the project's area is in, in here. The surrounding uses are predominantly office and commercial development, you know, along there, obviously Route Three. Along Parkhurst and then it's Lowell. There is a residential apartment buildings complex in Lowell, just over the line. That's directly sort of in between the two municipal landfill, landfill sites out there.
And like a laundromat?
Sorry?
And like, there's a laundromat there too?
There, there may be, there's a lot of businesses around this, this area. Yeah, right, the entrance of Lowell there, yes, there. The entire property is about thirty-one point six acres. And the site is actually accessed through the Lowell driveway in Lowell. So that's the, the access to the site, it's not accessed off of Stedman Street. There was an historic access there. Black Brook runs sort of under, on the property, under Route Three and then back out over Route Three. And it's off the edge of, the extent of the landfill and the extent of this project out there. The landfill itself is about twenty acres and was capped in the late, in the two thousand seventeen, eighteen timeframe, completed capping out there and it's been sitting out there. It's owned by a private entity, Sam Banks LLC. The overall approach to the project is that the proponent, Pro Generation, will purchase the property from the current owner and as part of that process, will address any back taxes or issues that are out there and then take over the maintenance and the monitoring of the landfill project, which I can get into a lot of more detail at the board, would like to hear about that. I thought it would be appropriate to give you a quick site history here because it is, it is not, this was never a, you know, Chelmsford landfill per se. It was originally a sand and gravel pit. It was owned as well, as well as the Lowell landfill site. It was operated for trash disposal as part of the same operation of the Lowell landfill. And just quickly, without getting into a lot of dates, Lowell landfill was a private landfill that the city bought a portion of it after that. In the mid, in the nineteen nineties, the trash was entirely excavated off of the Glenview property and relocated to the Lowell landfill, which was subsequently capped. It now has a solar field on top of it, as you can see from the various roads coming around there. As part of that process, there was some material manufactured gas plant waste that was found on the site. That was, there was three removal actions of that. And there's continuing monitoring of groundwater to determine if there's any remnant conditions, issues related to that out there. This Glenview landfill site is in its post-closure period, which is regulated under the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Solid Waste Regulations. And as part of that, there's an ongoing obligation to sample wells for a thirty-year period and then to do regular maintenance of the site. The first step in this project is to bring the maintenance up to date on the capped areas of the site. I will say the cap has held up very well. It's in good condition, there are no apparent issues with it right now. It does require some tree and shrub removal to, you know, where the roots may have gotten and, you know, could potentially impact the cap out there. I just want to take a quick moment and talk about what the cap is on this site. Typical solid waste cap and it is, and I don't know if you're familiar with the town landfill, but it is different than the town landfill because it was capped in more, more modern time out, out there. So the cap is essentially, it's a forty mil plastic FML and I can share an example of what that is. So it's a flexible membrane liner out there that is, got some corrugations on it to hold, sort of hold it in place. It's covered by twelve inches of sand and eight inches of topsoil. So when you look out there, what you see is the topsoil at the site and the, you know, the grass surface, that's typical of an old capped, capped landfill. That covers all the entire twenty acres of the site. And along with that, there are a series of drainage swales and a stormwater retention slash infiltration basin. Again, I'll approach this, located, so just to orient you again, Route Three is down here, out there. And then the landfill's here, Lowell landfill's up here. These dark lines are sort of the existing swales and down shoots. The basin is down located here. Black Brook comes sort of through over here and there's some pocket wetlands largely created by the old sand operation. There's a sort of a washing facility broken down back here that was there. So some of these were just pits that were, just where they stored water to run that, run that operation at times. They're, that are now wetland resources out there. We are going to reconfigure some of this basin as part of the project, which I'll talk about in a moment. The area here that is pouring, the red line out here is roughly the, is the edge, asphalt edge of the existing cap. So it goes up to the property lines, both on the Lowell side and then along sort of the east, I'm assuming the west side of the site there. So the proposed project is to put up to about a six megawatt AC facility, solar PV facility with battery storage. Because this, go down. The top, the, the, the solar facility on the top area, one more please. Okay. The solar facility on the top of the site will be a traditional ballasted facility, much like you must have, you have at your, your, the town landfill. Or there's probably fifty landfills across the state that have this. There's no penetration of the existing cap. The, the ballasts are basically put on top of the existing surface and they're concrete blocks or filled, you know, there's different structures for that and the panels just sit raised above those out there and, and, and are put, are, you just sit there and they're oriented obviously towards the south-southeast to pick up the sun there. There's a lot of facilities that have done this very conventional, very sort of standard procedure for that. The second part of this thing is a battery storage facility up here that is going to be located in this, in this area. I'll provide, I, I, I realize I didn't provide a lot of information about that to, to the board and I will provide some additional information about that facility to the board as part of that, after this hearing out there. But the side slopes of the landfill are, you know, this area, so the darker blue with the checkers is going to be a, a product known as closure turf, which is going to be associated with a power cap specialized solar panel out there. So the real value of this project is the fact that the solar is not just on the flatter parts of the site, that's going to be able to be implemented on the existing slopes of the site out there that face appropriated with the solar. So I want to talk for a minute about what happens with that. How, what that is. So the existing grass surface is eight inches of topsoil relying twelve inches of sand. The project will strip off the top four inches of topsoil off the site on the slopes and then we're going to reconfigure the stormwater and I'll talk a little more detail about that in a moment, out there. And then this closure turf product rolls in. So I want to be, the existing liner cap not touched by this operation and there's design, and the design is intended to maintain that and keep that there. Another layer of cap of the same material will be rolled out on that stripped surface coming down the slope. So essentially on those areas, you'll get a double cap. They'll be tied in at the edges to the, to the, to the top and bottom of the, where it's installed out there. That material is going to be overlaid by a turf material that sort of integrates with the, and I actually can show you an example of it. It has a sort of a, integrates with that liner material and stays on-site. And then there's a sand, sort of keeps it, that's, that's blown into it, that keeps it in place out there, keeps wind from pulling it up out there. This oper- that closure turf cap has become the final cap at several landfills in Massachusetts. The one that's closest to you is, that I know of, is the one in Haverhill. That's right off of four ninety-five at the one twenty-five extension and you can see it, you can, the size that you can see and the way you know is it's green even in January out there. It doesn't, you know, grass, the, the, the grass doesn't die or, or go dormant in that period of time. So it's a proven technology out there. On top of that surface, there's a proprietary power cap material which so, which, which attaches to that system and then runs a, sort of a solid line of, of, of solar panels down the slope out there. There's spaces in between and, and things and there's wind deflectors and, and different things out there. But that will attach to that system, to that closure turf system and allow us to put solar on, you know, a good, you know, as you can see, you know, probably seventy percent of the site out there, including the ballasted system out there. That, you know, that, that brings a huge advantage to the project. It brings, you know, a lot more potential for solar and, and use and, you know, value to the project to fund the long-term, you know, maintenance and, and control and, and work at the site out there. As part of that project, we're going to have some changes to the stormwater system. And I, one of the key things is it was, the, the stormwater system was initially, as is, was designed for the current site in two thousand fourteen. Obviously, we're designing it to the current standards, the higher rainfall events that are, that are out there. And we're going to, you know, change around some of the stormwater things I'll talk about in a minute. We're going to do some improvements to the roadway. One of the improvements is to address a, a fire department comment about adequate turning and, and, and getting access out there. There'll be a perimeter fence around the installation. We'll maintain the ten-foot buffer from the non-residential areas and obviously we're going to maintain, well-maintained, well over the twenty-five foots of the residential areas in Lowell out there. The existing, I just want to talk about, there's a requirement in your bylaw about, you know, providing vegetation and things. We, we can't really plant trees on top of the landfill, you know, there's, there's this, this much cover on top out there. But this area, most of this area along here is, you know, there's some several tree, there's a lot of trees along here. We are not cutting down any, any trees that are obviously outside. We, we'll have to cut down some small trees that are on the cap right now. That's going to have to happen regardless of this project, but there are, you know, any of the trees that are on the outside of the site will not be cut down in, in, on the, the stormwater basin. There's some trees that will call up in that area and those need to be come down for just the maintenance of the basin, but there'll be no further, you know, removal of those trees down in that area. So one of the, Evan, you can scroll up a little bit. One of the things that we're going to do is, you know, this is, there's a sort of intermediate swales here now. This product allows us to sort of run it all the way down the slope and it's stable out there. And, you know, we talk about landfill cap stability and things like that, but it allows us to do that. And there's a large swale that comes along here to intercept all the water and bring it to the basin, similarly over here, to bring it all to the, this basin. The basin gets, you know, sort of expanded a little bit in some areas out here, but essentially it's a similar footprint. It still lacks us an infiltration basin as a, as part of the, of its component, but it's designed for the hundred-year, twenty-four-hour storm event. And we, you know, DPW was asked for a third-party review and the process of, of working that through out there of the stormwater design as well as the, the nitty-gritty, the landfill cap details out there, the way, how this is being integrated and, and taken care of out there, put together. One of the critical things here is all the material, we don't anticipate bringing any soil on and off the site for this project. We're going to strip some topsoil off and, you know, there might be some grass that has to go to a composting facility, but the, you know, generally we're going to keep all that material on-site. We may have to bring a little bit of this material in to balance, you know, some of the ballasts and things, but we're talking, you know, less than twenty trucks of, of soil out there. And unlike the prior project that was done out here, this will all be clean rock, topsoil, you know, materials out there. And any of that will be tested to ensure that it's, that it works out there. We did start, we did open the Conservation Commission hearing last night for this project. It was just immediately continued, so we will come back to them at their next meeting, which I think is in a couple of weeks out there. We'll respond to the fire department comments and work with them out there and then we'll confirm the approach to the back taxes and the specifics of the project. But I just wanted to give a, a, a brief overview and then see what questions you have and I can dive into any, anything further that you might, that the, the board members or the public might have concerns or, or comments.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we have letters for this project?
Yes. Two. Let's see, sorry. From Captain Josh Abbott at Chelmsford Fire Department, dear members of the board, the Fire Prevention Office respectfully submits the following comments and conditions for your consideration regarding the proposed solar photovoltaic facility at one fifty-two Stedman Street code compliance. All constructions shall comply with applicable codes, including but not limited to the Massachusetts State Building Code, Mass CMRs, Mass General Laws, NFPA Standards and Town Chelmsford Bylaws. Plans will be reviewed by this office as part of the permitting process. Separate permitting is required through this office for the proposed energy storage system, ESS. Site access, the proposed access is not adequate as designed. A turnaround must be provided and truck turning plans shall be submitted for review. The access road must be engineered to support the heaviest Chelmsford Fire Department apparatus, specifically ladder one. Site maintenance and emergency access, the site shall be maintained and vegetation shall be managed around the solar array and battery storage facility. Twenty-four hour emergency contact information must be posted on-site. All access gates shall be secured with NOCS padlocks to ensure emergency access. Water supply, site plans must indicate the location of the nearest hot fire hydrant. A fire flow analysis shall be conducted and submitted to this office for review. We respectfully request that these comments and conditions be incorporated into the board's decision and entered into the public record. And then a letter from myself in my capacity as treasurer-collector. Dear Planning Board members, I have reviewed the property described for property tax compliance and have the following comments. As of today, there is an outstanding tax title balance of ninety-three thousand four oh six seventy-three due on this property owned by Sandbanks LLC. This does not include outstanding FY twenty-five taxes of just over fourteen thousand four hundred seventeen, or FY twenty-six first quarter taxes. I request that legal counsel file a foreclosure case in the Massachusetts Land Court against this property for unpaid taxes in April of twenty-three. Therefore, I request that any site approval or permits granted for this project, proposed project be conditional on full payment of all outstanding taxes, interest and fees owed to the town of Chelmsford. The applicant is welcome to call, contact the Tax Collector's Office for more information. John Souza, Treasurer Collector.
Okay, thank you. Evan, do you have any?
Yeah, just a couple of items. Bruce had mentioned DPW has requested a peer review. They specifically recommended an engineer from Weston and Sampson. Weston and Sampson has significant experience on all sides related to landfills. So as Bruce mentioned, we're in the process of getting that proposal, having the applicant review it and then cut the check to the town. Bruce had mentioned some background information. This, this represents a, a good long-term solution for this site. While the, while it's capped, it's clear that, you know, a, a long-term solution is needed to ensure the proper maintenance of the, of, of the landfill. And obviously this would likely serve as a, as a good solution for the backs, back taxes that are due. Bruce didn't spend too much time on the, he mentioned that this is under DEP solid waste. Bruce's presentation was very technical on the, on the land, on the landfill and the closure and the, the systems. I would encourage you to really focus your review on the, the zoning bylaw, the performance standards that are outlined for your review and approval. My point is, is that much of what Bruce has, the technical aspects of it, as I understand it, are directly under the review and approval of DEP. While Weston and Sampson will do a stormwater review, which is well within your, your purview and Conservation purview, Weston and Sampson has also been asked to do a general review of best, best industry practices related to the technical aspects of it. But I would caution you to get, you know, too involved in the, the technical landfill capping aspects of this and focus more on the solar aspects as it pertains to the, the standards in the bylaw.
Okay.
Actually, also mentioned that this, this did trigger a butter notification into the city of Lowell. Same, same exact process as butters in Chelmsford, all butters of three hundred feet were notified.
Okay.
I could just talk about the solid, the DEP has a post-closure use permit application that they, they've had since June. We've gotten some initial comments back, there's some additional clarifications, we have to provide them. None of them will substanti- substantively change the project that we're presenting to the board tonight.
I did have some questions around that DEP process. You said that there's a monitoring period post-cap.
Yes.
How much longer is that monitoring period for?
The monitoring period by regulations is a minimum of thirty years. There are landfills that have gotten to that thirty years and have not stopped out there. So it's, 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 you know, it's a minimum of thirty years. This landfill was certified closed in two thousand seventeen or eighteen, so we still have a long time to go out there and things.
And does the work being done here reset that clock or does it?
Not, no, no. It doesn't necessarily reset it. You know, it's that thirty, it's that thirty-year timeline from the date that it's certif- you know, determined to be closed by DEP. I guess, I, I just would say, I, I've got several landfills I work on that have gotten to that, that, that thirty-year timeline. They were closed in nineteen eighty-something and they're still doing some, some kind, some level of monitoring.
Okay.
Out there.
That was my only question around the DEP monitoring is, is I want to make sure that whatever work is being done is still being monitored after the work is done to make sure that whatever we approve isn't going to undo some of the, the things that DEP was looking at. So that was my only concern related to that. But I would guess this project's going to be done within that thirty pe- thirty-year period.
I won't be wrong to say it is.
Okay. All right, let's take it around the board, starting on this side with any questions.
Um, not really too many, just, as we look at like certain things, I know like Nees talked about the last project in a sec, how are you going to be able to see these solar panels driving on some of these streets around this area, like?
Yeah, I, I was involved with the closure of the landfill before and we did a balloon test to show, you know, the height, because you see it planted circles and, and things. You know, I don't think you're going to see a lot of this landfill from public roads, from public streets out there. I, I just don't see it now because there's buildings in front and it's set back from, you know, from the streets, things. The one place you do see some of it is coming up Route Three right before you get off of the Drum Hill exit.
Yeah, that's fine.
You can, you can see, you sort of see into it there, but there really isn't a lot of view into that and that, you know, that the, the ballasted panels are not, they're, you know, they're six, eight feet high, so you're not going to really be increasing the, the overall heights. You're not, I, I don't think you're going to really see much out there. Again, most of our butter is the city of Lowell's landfill.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's just a concern, like with, you know, the businesses and the butters there, like, is this going to be an eyesore, you know, in this area? I think it's a great idea, but just.
Yeah, no.
Deidre?
Um, I think it's a great idea. It seems like a good long-term solution to continued maintenance on the site and the tax issues. Um, I had a, I was listening to a, like a, I don't know, interview, I guess, with, it might have been McGivens, I don't know, but they were, he was talking about, whoever it was, was talking about solar fields and putting pollinator strips between some of the panel rows and I don't know if, in this case, if you could do it at the edges, but that, that's been something that's been done on farmland in the, in the Midwest and, um, I mean, you know, there's a kind of a effort nationwide to rewild some land and obviously if you have limited amount of, um, stuff to, to grow in, the dirt, and then you're putting something other things in it, but I'm just wondering if you could keep that in mind and if there's opportunities for that sort of thing. I think that would be something that I would value.
I, I, I will ask somebody who knows a lot more about what can grow and, under certain shade conditions and things like that, that, that might be something to do. I mean, my experience with landfills is some, what, what comes up, comes up out there and, and it's a wide variety, you know, the grasses and, and everything else. I mean, there's certain sites I've been on, there, there's, there's millions of grasshoppers for whatever reason out there. But, you know, I think, we could, I could talk to somebody and see if there's some opportunity there. But again, aside from the slopes where we're putting that closure turf.
Right, of course.
Material there, you know, the top, we're really not looking to re-establish seeding or things like that, but it's certainly something we can at least consider and look at out there.
Anita?
Who gets the energy? Like, does the town, do we get anything from, in the town?
I believe the town gets, it's not, it's not a net metering, like the town net metering project out there, it just goes into the, into the grid system and it's, it's energy, it's renewable energy.
They make all the money.
Well, that was, uh, this case, so, okay, definitely we can get maybe some of it, some sort of, if you arrange it or something.
I'm, I'm sure a couple of electrons will find their way to town, to the town hall or whatever.
Like, can we do, I don't know, like, this, this is a lot of solar panels, maybe, you know.
Upbringing down that energy cost?
Well, yeah, you haven't, well, you're not on the finance committee, but like, we look at the energy cost and.
Yeah, I know.
It's a big line item, so if there was something we could do to get something back to the town, it'd be great. It's a big line item, so if there was something we could do to get something back to the town, it'd be great. Something, some total.
I, I, I'm not, I'm not optimistic on that, but, you know, I, I can, I can, I can talk to people, again, who know more about this than I do. But I think, I don't think it's optimistic. And again, if the town had a, had a water treatment plant next door, a school, it'd be a lot easier to do this. But it's at the, the very edge of the town and, you know, really not another use. And again, there's, the, the credits really run towards putting it back into the, into the utility system and, and, and getting it out that way.
Sorry to jump in, Bruce, but absolutely, we can look at, oh, wow. We can definitely look at that. I don't know where my voice is projecting, but.
Everywhere.
But yes, we can absolutely look at that and if it's feasible, for sure.
Great, thank you.
Great.
And related to that, actually, John, I had a question for you. Is, is a solar farm taxed differently?
They usually, you know, it's something I'd have to, the assessors would have to look at. I can tell you of another much smaller project than this, on the town's landfill, they have a pilot agreement with the town in lieu of personal property tax. So again, I'm not assessing expert, but generally, I believe the solar equipment, you would either be subject to personal property tax or usually, sometimes the company will enter into a pilot agreement with the town. For, you know, for several years.
Okay. Any questions for them?
No, I think, you know, as some of my colleagues have said on the board, I think, given the history of this site, the fact that it has to remain capped, this seems like the best, you know, solution that you could do at this site would be to, to make it a solar site, generating site, excuse me.
I have a question, if you can go back up to that. On the top portion of this, I think, is where you said, right now, the existing type of soil would still kind of remain on top of that layer. And that turf area would be going down the sloped side towards like, around by like Route Three and everywhere?
On this plan, essentially, the top areas in here where it's sort of, to the left of this project area, that's the plateau with the ballasted system.
Yeah.
The, the power cap closure turf system was sort of starting, roughly start here and run along from, you know, low, below this line, around here and then along in this area here.
And those are much more low-profiled, almost on-the-ground type of system, right?
Yes, yes, out there. I think we did provide in our application.
Yeah, I was looking at the pictures.
Some pictures and some, you know, some catalog information, what they look like. They're, you know, maybe eight to ten inches off the ground total out there. So, and there's, there's space, there's a break in them and spacing to allow.
And then I do just have a slight question because I sit in traffic on Route Three every single day for hours. I know that solar panels absorb sunlight, but then there's still also potential for glare. Is there anything that was done to look at any sort of glaring that might happen towards the highway or that direction? Because people do sit there in like parking lot-style traffic on that road.
So, uh, we did, I, I, I will find out some more information from the vendor that provides. Because it's really the power cap system that you would see, the rest, I mean, the, the one, the panels on the, they're going to be sort of tilted the, the wrong way to, or the good way to see that. It would really be that one little corner. And my guess is that the sun is not going to ever hit that.
Just checking.
Directly enough out there, but yeah, that, that's a, that's a question we can look into a little bit.
And I do like the idea of, especially where that lower portion with that system's going to be, nothing's really, nothing can grow there because that turf-style system has the sand in it, there's our low-profile items. I like the idea of possibly like the pollinator type of thing on that higher up area, if it's a possibility. Because, you know, it, there are some trees that you said that you're taking down. And then to that, again, like the other projects that we've had, for the trees that you're taking down, can something else in the town be done for tree canopy?
Well, the trees, so the trees that we're taking down are growing on top of the cap because they haven't been, you know, taken down before. So they sort of, they, they, we're talking about trees that are the height of this room type of thing. So they're, they're sort of, they, they need to come down to protect the cap necessarily there. So it's, it's not a clearing for a development or anything.
But I think you're also talking down by the bottom too, where some of the basins were.
Okay.
I'm going to push for trees wherever I can.
Mike?
Yeah, it sounds quite sensible to me, good bit of power coming out of this. I would ask, uh, what visual impact, if any, will there be on the hookup to this? This is obviously going to have to make it into the power system.
The, the interconnection to the power system runs along.
I presume that'll be at the battery.
It, well, runs down the road in the back.
Okay.
I know where it goes, but it's going to run down the road in the back and then it's going to go out the side driveway into Lowell. So there's existing, so Lowell has a salt shed up on top here and different things.
Okay.
So they, they have power into this area, so the interconnection's going to run out.
All right, so it's, it's not going to increase the, the height of the poles or anything like that?
No, you're not going to see, you, you wouldn't see it out there because between the apartment buildings and the landfill, it's, it's blocked there.
All right.
Is it going on poles or is it underground?
Um, so it's, it has to go on poles, you can't, because the cap, you can't, you know, I, I know that's, I know you have a requirement that you prefer, or that the, the, the town has a requirement to have it underground. You can't, you, you can't bury it into the cap because the cap, again, is twenty inches below the existing grade. So we'll bring it on poles down and we can boot, you know, if there's, there's going to be a poles, a pole or two in the length, in the cap area. Those can be just booted around that area there.
Like in that picture, is that what those, the poles are? The one where it shows like it's going up?
Yes, yes, yep, yes, down in that area.
They look like these little hurricane things on the picture, okay.
There's a detail for how that gets booted into the, into the existing cap.
You mentioned that there's a perimeter fence going around the project area. Is that, is that currently, is there currently a fence there or?
There's some areas where there is a fence, there are some areas where there are not out there. So the fence is going to be on areas that are on the landfill cap. It's going to be sort of a, a more like a construction fence kind of thing with, where the, the bottom plate is buried out there. Because again, we have the problem of, you can't just drive a post down. And then areas where it's outside the fence will have, uh, will have, will have a, you know, standard chain link fence for the posts.
Um, I'm glad the fire department asked the question or made the statement about the road because I had similar questions about the road. In the future plans, it would also be good to show where the snow is going to be plowed? Because I'm assuming there'll be plowing done on that road?
So.
For winter maintenance?
Yes, the, the access road will be plowed to get out there and generally, the snow will go over the side of the access road out there. But at the top, I think that's what, you know, where the turnaround would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a good, that's a good question out there. So, um, I mean, the, the panels themselves do not get, they just.
Right, yeah.
They just get left and.
No, I'm talking about the road and the access.
Yes, yeah, the road and the access out there. I mean, Lowell, I mean, Lowell runs, so for most of the access road coming in, that's their salt facility. So that is maintained as well as any street in the area.
Okay. And then there's an access road going to the top where the battery storage, I think, is. Is there, did I see another gravel road going around?
So there, there is another road that goes, that existing road that goes around here that comes out at the bay, at the, the basin right now. And that will sort of mostly be maintained around, you see it coming around the edge here. And you can get, you can get over here if you need to. So that was put there to, to maintain the basin and access the monitoring, the monitoring well network is over here.
Okay.
Access that.
So that road will be used to access and maintain that.
That, that area of the cabin. There's really no, if you see, there's really not any change to that, you know, those areas that road is there.
Okay. And I think showing the snow, where the snow would go for that as well? Because that is, you don't necessarily want to add more snow into the basin for groundwater collection.
I would say that that road will not be plowed regularly.
Okay.
I mean, it, it's really, um, if the, if the basin needs maintenance kind of thing. And again, when there's snow in the ground, you're not going to really be.
Okay.
Going after that. That, that's not, it's not a regular access road, it's really more of a perimeter.
All right.
Access to the back.
And then for maintaining the panels and things like that, I'm assuming a vehicle would drive up that access road to the top. Would people, would the workers walk towards the panels? Would there need to be any access paths or anything like that?
I mean, the, the panels on the top will have a, a separation between them that they can get in there. But it's not a separation, you could drive a, a truck through out there. So generally, people will walk. Again, these, these facilities have been in place for over a decade and there really isn't a ton of, of maintenance and repair. And what, sometimes what happens is for some, somehow these panels get broken and out there, I don't know what breaks them out there. But they get broken or there's an electrical issue and they can go and, and fix that and get in there with a small piece of work.
Okay. And the same thing for the side?
Yeah.
They would just walk?
The, the panels on the side are, are, there's a video that they have, they, they showed us two, two people just carrying them down. And they're not, they're not a, you know, something that, that, that we could, you know, some, a couple of people can maintain and deal with.
Okay. That's all the questions I had. All right, this being a public hearing, we will take public comments. Come right up. For anyone asking questions or providing comments, please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Tammy Cox, one forty Stedman Street. Can we look at the Google Earth slide again? Um, so I just want to show everybody, these three buildings right here, these are townhouses. There's sixteen units, there's about forty of us that live right here. Right across the street, this is like Eric C. Foster Plumbing, just for some reference. This is the wetlands area. So I do have some questions and some concerns. I think it's a fantastic idea and will be a great use. But what I'd like to understand better is if you go to the next slide down, uh, yeah. And, should probably do it over here. So primarily where I'm looking is we've got our hundred-foot perimeter here on green, right? And I see where some, um, tree lines are here. These are the tree lines that we abut for the, um, wetlands. And I'm wondering what exactly is going to be happening over here with the storm basin? And also, uh, there is that little side road that actually abuts our fence, which is another maintenance road in. So I do have some concerns about how that would be used and if it would be used.
Yeah, I can share where that road is.
Yes.
On this plan, it's, 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 it's just right, right, right here.
Okay, right, and so that's our fence.
Yeah, okay, yes, yeah, that's right, right along there.
And then these are, these are the townhouses right here. Okay. So I have some concerns about how many trees in that area might, might come down. We do have quite a large wildlife ecosystem there with that wetlands. We've got lots of hawks, owls, we've got deer, we've got foxes. So I am concerned about any type of impact that the construction or after construction would have on that. I also have a concern about the perimeter fence that would be maybe in that wetlands area. Would there, would there be a fence there?
No, no, it's around the bottom of the landfill itself out there, they buried it, yes.
And I know on one of the pages, you guys were talking about the view and stuff. And you talked about the, the tree perimeter. That would be, I believe, the tree perimeter for us, right, this, these trees?
Yes, all of here, yes.
So it's great for six months out of the year when there's leaves on the tree. Not so much for the other six months when it's winter and there are no leaves. We do have great views of the, of the dump. So the last thing that I wanted to bring up was about the construction. You're going to put up some silt fences, the, the straw bales. Is that all going to be removed when the construction's done? Or is that going to be?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And what kind of disturbance in the wetland would occur for any of that?
Excuse me, could you speak into the microphone? We're having a hard time hearing.
Sorry. So, so what kind of, what, what would happen in, in the wetland area when you need to do that construction and put up those bales and then go back in and then remove them? What kind of disturbance is going to be happening?
So I can actually answer some of that.
Oh, great, yeah.
The, um, the Conservation Commission, when they look more details into the stormwater and the construction of this in the wetlands buffer, they'll be looking at all of that and they'll be asking those detailed questions. That's going to be more of their purview for the, the disruption of the wetlands and things like that.
Is there going to be any lights that you guys are going to be putting up that might flare down on us at night?
I'm sensitive to talking into the microphone.
Thank you.
No, there's no lights. There'll be some, some lights around, you know, this sort of, you know, exit, you know, sort of lights that you can see. But not, not a spotlight or anything that you would be able to see in any great detail.
Right, perfect, that, that's all the questions I have right now.
I could try to answer some of those questions.
Yes, actually, actually, I did have a question for the resident.
Oh, yeah.
When you're in your.
In the townhouse?
The community area, are you able to see the top of the cap?
Yes.
Okay. Above the trees or through the trees when it's not?
Through the trees.
Through the trees?
Through the trees.
Is there any view above the trees at this point?
Uh, I don't believe so. They're three-story townhouses and perhaps the long building that overlooks that, they might on their top floor, which is bedrooms.
Okay, thank you.
I'll try to, I, I, I try to sketch, write these down out there. The Stedman Street access is the old gravel pit access out there. And that's not going to be used for this, for this project or re-proposed to be used. It's, there's a, there's a wetland crossing, it would be difficult to get in there from that. I will, I, I will provide a plan, and I think this will come up with the Conservation Commission too, of the limits of the, the existing basins, the limits of the old basin. There is no wetland filling, you know, wetland, direct wetland impacts, all buffer zone work that we're proposing out there. The perimeter fence will be on the landfill and we certainly can take a look at the view from that property. Obviously, a little disadvantaged when the, it's, it's, with the, with the wetlands out there, or excuse me, with the trees out. But we can take a look at that, we can give you a sense of, because I think it answers your question about the tree, tree cut downs. And, you know, with the extent of that difference is out there. So we could provide that overlay and.
Thank you.
Give you some information for that.
And that view from both Route Three and that development would be good? Because those are really the only two areas that, in Chelmsford, that would be impacted significantly.
You really have a hard time seeing it any, from, even that, the houses into the west, obviously, the businesses to the west.
Okay.
They're facing the other way.
Take a look on my commute tomorrow. I hate to say this, but I've lived here in like over fifty years and I still can't find this one. Like, I've looked for it. Like, I always see the Lowell one, but I can't find, I don't know where this one is.
Treasure hunt.
Not that I look for it that often, but when I'm in the area, I'm like, she's going on a hunt tomorrow.
Aside from, you know, maybe the townhouses out there.
Now I'm going to go into their, yeah, I'm going to go into their, their, I'm going to go into the condo area and look from there.
You have to go behind the buildings to the, to the west of it to see what's there. And I, you know, it doesn't really look like much out there.
For the longest time, I thought the Lowell landfill was the Chelmsford landfill, until someone told me that was Lowell.
I sometimes see deer by that bridge.
It's a dormant site. I mean, it's, it's not, there's not a lot of activity out there and it won't be, you know, it won't be going forward either.
Are there any other, any other public comments? Anything on Zoom? All right. So at this point, I think we'll, I will take a motion to continue it. Probably to, Evan, what do you think on the timing on the stormwater?
Yeah, I mean, I had indicated to Weston to try to target the nine-ten meeting. I think that's still doable.
Okay. I was hoping you'd say the second September meeting.
Let's, let's continue it to nine-ten and let's see, let's see what happens.
Okay.
All right, then I'll move to continue until the meeting on September.
Motion by Mike?
Second.
Second by Anita, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Very much.
Thank you everyone.
We're looking to get, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
By then, Conservation will admit on it twice. All right.
They're not taking any time out?
No, they're not. The next item on our agenda is the proposed zoning bylaw amendments, new public hearing. And I will explain this one. So as the town council reviewed our language for town meeting, he realized that there are some things we neglected to put in. Um, the parking lot accessory use, while we discussed the changes to the table for the CBLT, technically have to carry that line item across all of the other, um, districts. Same thing for ultralight manufacturing. Um, so the ultralight manufacturing and the two different parking lot accessory uses have to be carried across the entire, um, table. So.
And housekeeping?
Yeah, it's a bit of housekeeping. Um, I would like to open this and close it almost immediately because it really is just housekeeping. Both this one and the, um, continued bylaw hearing should be closed tonight uh, because the Select Board is meeting on the eighth, I believe, Evan, um, to, uh, vote on the amendments or the articles. Um, and we kind of need to have this buttoned up by then.
Does it not need to be opened twice in the public hearing?
Nope.
Or is that?
Nope.
Something I made up in my head?
So I just had a question on.
So, before we get to that, I, I'm going to explain this and I will
Probably answer my question.
Probably answer your question.
Okay.
So on the forest accessory use, um, it's really just a yes on CB light and no across the board because we really aren't thinking about this yet in the other areas. Um, if we want it in the other areas, we can add that to the list of things we talk about in future, um, meetings. Um, but it really is something we were only considering for this zone. Same thing for the second parking lot accessory use. Slightly different for the ultralight manufacturing, we did talk about it in the CBLT. Um, and I also put in yes for IA, IS, and for the CB special permit. The reason why I did this is because the light manufacturing, um, which is a heavier use and more disruptive, has those same indicators in those same zones. So it makes sense, from a logical perspective, I think, to have the lighter impact use also allowed in the same way in those same zones. So by right, it would be allowed in IA and IS, and then by special permit in the CB. I think that makes sense.
It does.
It does, you may want to have a slide at first town meeting that, like, shows that we currently have normal manufacturing
Yeah, I will.
in this is for light, because.
Yep.
Um, I still have a question, though.
Huh?
Um, when I read number ten, everything's the same as number eleven except at line D thirty-eight and as line
Yeah, one is.
E twenty-two, what's the difference?
I think D, if I remember correctly, is commercial accessory use, and E is industrial accessory use. We added two separate accessory uses.
Okay, so we may need to explain that in.
Yep, oh yeah, well, cover all of that in the slides.
Lots of explaining to do.
Okay.
And my intent is to fold all of this into one package. So there are technically two separate hearings here, but it'll be one package in the town meeting, and I'll explain more on that soon.
Did we get the names of those people that actually said this was a good idea at the last meeting, so we can invite them, personally invite them to the town?
Yeah, all the room at the mill.
All right, so any other questions or comments on this one?
This is a new public hearing.
Yes, I know, I, I've got to open it up to, yeah. But any questions or comments on this from the board before I open it up?
Perfect, it seems.
Looks good.
Any comments from the public on?
Wait, they'll open this up to the public?
Yeah.
First? Do we open it?
Yeah.
Oh, no, wait.
I did. Um, are there any public comments on this specific public hearing? Any on Zoom? Okay, there being none. I will take a motion.
Close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, for, uh, motion by Mike, second by Deirdre, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearing is opened and closed pretty quickly. Moving on to this next public hearing. So, this public hearing, um, is a continuation of all of the other zoning changes that we have been considering. Um, I did, um, we did attach the email from Lockheed Martin to the, the, um, agenda as well, so that people can see that. And then we all, I also asked Evan to attach the legal format, um, document, which is up on the screen now. My thought for town meeting is to present, so what I did for this document is I also pulled in the changes that we just, um, approved. Um, and I combined all of the CB light zoning changes into essentially one presentation that, I don't know the logistics of town meeting, but I would like to either do a consent agenda or vote on them as one package. What's that?
What's likelihood, though, because they like to, at the town meeting, they'll vote, when you do packages, no, a lot of times. Then you lose out on some of the stuff they've been trying to push.
And I thought about that, which is why I pulled Kate's Corner out of this. Because this really is about the CB light zoning and all of the minutia details that we have to do in order to do the zoning.
Create a new zone.
Yeah. If, if we separate these out and one fails, it all fails. Because we have to do all of these changes in order to do this zone. So that's why I kind of want to try and have it voted on as a package deal for the one through twelve changes.
So hold on, here we go, one through twelve, so one is what? This is number two.
So one is to add the district itself.
Yep.
Number two is to
Add the table.
Add the table.
All these.
Or the lines in the table.
Yep.
Um, and the footnotes. Three is to add the dimensional requirements.
Yep.
Four is to add the SEAD dimensional standards.
Yep.
Um, five is to change the applicability.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Six is property lines. Seven is street frontage. Eight is dimensional standards. Nine is the manufacturing light definition and ultralight definition. Ten, eleven, and twelve are the ones we just talked about. And that is essentially the package deal for this zone.
Yeah, the only thing I would, I would, I, I think that's, yeah, definitely, the only thing I may want to think about separating is the ultralight manufacturing and defining that, because that, if that's taken separately, say they, say no to everything else, and we get this defined, at least we have it there, and then we could always propose it for current zones, like, changing their current zoning, just a thought.
Yeah, but in order to say yes to everything, you need those definitions as part of it.
Okay.
If you do the definitions first, it, it's out of context. And the whole reason why we're doing these is for the zone.
I, uh, and then, I'm fine.
So I, I couldn't see how to split it up and make it make sense if something fails and.
Yeah, I, I can't imagine someone's, like, going to want to vote, like, on dimensional requirements and not on
Depends what they're voting on before.
You never know.
That other one that they're changing hopefully comes after this one, where does the family one?
So then.
Yeah, let's do this one first, please.
Yeah.
So then we get into applying that new zone, um, to Kate's Corner. Then we get into the
Massage?
Massage definition.
Oh, Tommy is going to hate us.
Then we get into family. Then we get into school impacts, then we get into ADU. And that's the end of it.
Just shot, we just shot a whole might of sound news.
Yes, they are.
Really only five if you consider the first twelve, is one big article.
Is there any way to push those two that they didn't like last time all the way to the end?
We could, maybe.
They're going to get angry.
You don't need to make any of those decisions tonight.
I'm glad you're here.
Me too.
All right, any comments, questions, anything like that from the board before we open it up one last time to the public?
Dead horse.
All right.
What did they say about a dead horse, it should be, uh, disposed of with, uh, minimum fanfare and maximum dispatch?
I just want to add that, um, I've kind of brushed upon it lately, um, you added the response, uh, from Lockheed Martin. They did, I just want to kind of like summarize it, they, in the last meeting, people had some concerns about light, sound.
They addressed all of them.
And they, you know, Lockheed Martin did go around, um, they've identified some areas to, um, I think, fix or remediate they're going to do for the sound, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm kind of trying to go off of memory here, what I read, um.
Yeah, they're building some metal welding walls.
Yep, to, to do that, and they're looking at all their lightning fixtures around to, uh, make sure that it's not approaching on anybody's property. So I think that.
I do have a question, sorry, I, I'm sorry.
No.
For Lockheed Martin, there was some mention of having another neighborhood meeting.
Oh, that was my other question, I forgot about that, that was on my list.
And Soboleski for Lockheed Martin, um, yes, we are in the process of setting up the meeting, but we decided that we were actually going to do it in September and not in August, so that we would make sure we would get more of a turnout. And at the last meeting, we had it at the Biem School, so we wanted to do that as well, and the school is currently not in session. So that is in process and it will happen, it's just going to be after Labor Day.
Perfect, thank you.
And also, I would just like to say.
And I want to echo Anita's comments that, um, the, the work you put into fixing those and addressing those problems is really appreciated by the board, so thank you. Um, I'm sure that the neighborhood's appreciative as well. All right, any other comments from the public? All right. So I will happily take a motion.
Would you do, close the public hearing on all of this stuff?
Second, on all of this stuff.
All right. Motion by Mike, second by Anita, all in favor?
Aye.
And what I just realized is we actually didn't vote on the, um, articles, so.
You know, what, probably what needs to be done tonight is a motion to, um, forward the articles, um, forward the articles to the Select Board to be included in the signed warrant. You can, you can take formal, uh, vote of recommendations tonight if you want, or you can, you can add that on.
We should take a recommendation, like, at this point, just take it, so that way, that way the Select Board has everything.
All right, so I'll take probably one motion to.
A motion to forward this to the Select Board.
Okay, motion to forward from Mike, second by Deirdre.
Aye.
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 Unanimous.
And a motion that the Planning Board recommend what we have just sent to the.
We endorse our, our articles.
Yes, we endorse them, okay.
Motion by Mike, second by Deirdre, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Unanimous.
Congrats, that was a lot of work done there.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
Very well done, too, I must say.
All right.
I learned a lot.
So the Chelmsford Mall, River Neck.
We're done.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Is there anything like, these people?
So disappointed.
Um, I noticed
Some people.
Are there any other issues that?
Do we want to do public, a public comment on?
They were saying that there's supposed to be the Planning Board, uh, to date for the Chelmsford Mall.
So that was continued to next meeting.
Clear, when?
Up here, up here. I know the speaker is in the back.
I, I, it's past my bedtime, I'm old.
So that.
I'm with you.
So around seven o'clock, we continue that, uh, to next meeting. So there's no public, no, um, presentation or discussion on that tonight. Um, it, there was a request to continue it without discussion.
The paper was wrong, and I guess I didn't hear you earlier.
Sorry about that.
I've been here since six-thirty, you know.
So you know all about how we work.
So now you know what's going on.
I got it all tonight.
My apologies.
So, when is it going to be?
Um, September tenth.
Oh, the next meeting.
It was updated on the, uh, website for the agenda, it did say request for continuation.
The agenda got, gets updated sometimes if that happens, so, so check the agenda online.
Oh.
On the date, on the date of
On the day of the meeting.
Oh, no, I don't go online.
Well, if you, if you come here downstairs on the wall, it's updated too.
Make my statement, huh?
Unfortunately, not tonight.
Okay, I'll mark it down. So it will, if it's changed, it will be on the
On the website, or you, as Evan said, you can call.
I can do that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, so our next meet, so just as a reminder, we don't have any more meetings for the rest of August, we have canceled that.
Do we want the next one to be at six-thirty?
Yes.
Which is pretty darn big.
Yeah.
Huge.
Six-thirty, uh, September tenth. Um, we've got a pretty significant agenda, um, but at least we don't have the zoning stuff. That's good.
Heavier stuff.
Really nice work on that.
Thank you. Um, I will take a look at what items we do have not continued. Um, I'm assuming some things will likely get continued, maybe, hopefully.
The four regulatory items will likely be actively on the agenda.
Four regulatory. Could be like an hour a piece.
The mall, one ninety-one, River Neck. And the two that you continued, uh, this evening.
So I will try and, I'll take a look at what we've got on the agenda and, um, probably limit time on each one.
To either, I don't know if we can, but limit time or limit the topic?
Yeah, it'll depend on what we get.
Well, then does that continue it forward, though, because if you don't get all your stuff that you want to ask?
Yeah, but, like, if we, like, if we take it in, I don't know, again, I don't know, like, we have the traffic report, for instance, for
Yeah, we'll focus it on traffic.
It'll be just for traffic, and we just need to say, like, put that in the agenda, we're only focusing on traffic.
And then it would continue on.
And then, yeah, or.
Yeah, so we'll see what information we get for each thing, and I will make a decision, hopefully, early on with Evan on Thursday, um, beforehand about what we might focus on. Whether we focus on things, or we limit time, or do a little bit of both.
Or maybe when you want to, maybe one week, like, another meeting.
I'll encourage it for, for each of them.
I'll take it.
Some consultants would prefer not to be on a busy agenda, and
Yeah.
maybe their scheduling and what have you.
Especially if things come in on a Monday for that agenda. Um, if, if it looks like things will come in on a Monday, if you can see if they will be willing to continue.
Yep, yeah, absolutely.
Um, because having to review that much information on a Monday with that big of an agenda is going to be challenging. Especially with all of the time we have prior to that. So, all right, so I'll take one last motion tonight.
Motion to adjourn.
This one too?
John's got it. Motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.